3:00 PM on July 2021, and I would like to call to order the public hearing for the Niles Main District Library Tentative Budget and Appropriation Ordinance 2102, a copy of which has been available for public inspection for at least 30 days. Notice of this public hearing has been posted in the newspaper as required by law. I would also like to add, at the beginning of this public hearing, that the Board will be considering increasing the appropriations for attorney fees by $500,000 when it adopts the final budget and appropriation ordinance tomorrow night. This is based on the fact that there are now significant union matters that will have to be addressed with legal counsel, as well as additional work related to the general library matters and FOIA's. It should be noted that simply because the amount is appropriated in the budget and appropriations ordinance, that does not mean the money will be spent, but the library cannot spend more than it appropriates for legal or any other item. Hey, Margaret, would you please take the roll?
Justice Dierblich?
Here.
Justice O'Shea?
Justice Schornfeld?
Here.
Justice McCullough?
Here.
Justice Wazowski?
Here.
Justice Olson?
Here.
Justice Adams?
Here.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I would like to address everyone. As Board President and Presiding Officer, it is my responsibility to preserve and maintain decorum at all times during official meetings of the Library Board. As such, this Board will not tolerate outbursts and interruptions during our meetings. I am asking that each member of the public respect that and to conduct yourselves accordingly. If, on the other hand, you do interfere with the orderly conduct of the meeting, or you persist in disorderly disruptive conduct, I will have you removed from the meeting. If you do not remove yourself voluntarily, I will request assistance from the Police Department. Any conduct which interrupts the consideration of library district business is considered disruptive, including but not limited to shouting, clapping, snapping, hissing, et cetera, during the meeting. And lastly, public participation and comment. I'll repeat that. Public participation and comment will be permitted during the public comment portion of the agenda, consistent with the library rules. Remarks shall be made from the speaker's podium only. Abusive and profane comments will not be permitted and will promptly be ruled out of order. If you persist, you will no longer be allowed to speak. The Board vests in me, as the Board President, the authority to terminate the remarks of speakers who fail to adhere to the rules. All public comments shall be addressed to the Board as a whole, and no comments shall be addressed to individual members of the Board, library staff, or other members of the public body. Thank you. Could we all stand now to pledge allegiance?
I don't know. Who came up with that?
I don't know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal in all, with liberty, justice for all. At the beginning of our public comments, at this time, I will read the rules of procedure for the public hearing. This is a public hearing held for a specific purpose, and public comments must be limited to the specific topic of the public hearing, which is the Niles Main District Library Tentative Budget and Appropriation Ordinance 21-02. Everyone will have one opportunity to speak who wishes to speak, provided that the Board can and will limit repetitive and non-relevant commentary. Individuals will be called for public comments in the order of the sign-up sheet. After all names on the sign-up sheet have been called, those who did not sign up wishing to provide public comments will be called upon to speak. Margaret, would you please call the first name on the sign-up sheet? We don't need emotion.
David Gervota?
Good evening, Board, Council. I'm a Niles resident for over 10 years, and when we're in courtrooms, we have judges that say, you know, what's the bottom line? The bottom line here is that we have a board that stepped forward, and they were handed a proposed budget by the previous board. Previous board that delegated all of its authority to hire and approve hirings and other matters involving the library, they delegated that authority. Once they were elected, they handed it off to the library, to library personnel. What happened is that the result, the board that left us, left sitting on the table, proposed budget of about $7.3 million. This board did not accept that budget and just put it through, which would have been the easy thing to do. This board knew that we're in Cook County, Illinois, and you're not supposed to touch budgets. We know what the history is, but they courageously did, took it, made a choice. They did the right thing. They looked at this budget, they looked at spending, and they cut the budget by 50, no, 40, no, 30, no, 20, oh, I'm sorry, 14%. And it restricts the library, puts a cap on spending to half a million dollars a month. Now, tonight, you're going to hear all kinds of reasons coming at you, why we cannot operate this library at half a million dollars a month. That is terrible. If anyone tries to present that, that is totally incompetent. It's a waste of taxpayers' funds. This library can easily operate and provide the services that by statute, by law, it's supposed to provide, and provide it efficiently. If someone goes ahead and provides you with a service, but overcharges you for that service, they're violating their fiduciary duty, such as if I need something done that takes one employee, but the director hires three and pays them and puts them on the payroll, it's overcharging. That's a violation of fiduciary duty. The budget that's been presented, I have reviewed it, it's the result of this board doing three budget workshops in a week, interviewing the directors of all departments, talking to employees, et cetera. I want to commend the Board for its work, for its effort, and for all the heat it's taken, but at least we've accomplished something. From the last time we were here till now, we all know that originally, the argument was, on the one side, the library is going away. On the other side, that we need to go ahead and not give any cuts, and we need to stay at $7.3 million in budget for 115 employees. That was the original argument. The argument now is getting closer to the truth, and that is that, first of all, as I said, the library is always going to be here. The library is not to be saved, because the library is not going away. Okay? So that's on the one hand. On the other hand, the library not going away, the argument stands on the other side, no cuts, they want $7.3 million and 115 employees. You wouldn't be doing your job. One last note, there's a sign here that says, "Save the Niles Library, Council 31, AFSCME." What that means is, "Save the Niles Library, Government Jobs and Government Payroll." That's what this is all about. If you could guarantee that every job will remain, you wouldn't have this kind of problem. Welcome to Cook County, Illinois. You're making a difference. It should be done at the library boards, it should be done at all boards, like we did at Main Township. I'm so proud of the Board of Main Township, the previous board, we abated back over $10 million to the taxpayers. We cut spending, not one program was impacted, not one complaint. We took a lot of heat in the beginning, it all worked out in the end. Why? Because you can have your cake, which is these, the programs that are needed, created by the library, but at a more efficient cost. Half a million dollars a month is enough. Thank you.
Margaret, the next one, please.
Elliot, where's the timer?
Osherman?
I'll spell it for you, just to make it easy. Elliot, E-L-I-O-T, last name Osherman, O-S-H-E-R-M-A-N. I'm going to read two things and then a comment. The first is the plaque that the library has in the lobby. This is a plaque from 2014. It says, "Now, Public Library Building Renovation, dedicated January 31, 2014, to better serve the needs of our library district. With special thanks to the Library Board of Trustees."
Excuse me, sir, this isn't relevant for today's budget.
It will be relevant in a moment when I make my comments.
Oh, come on. Are you going to cut everybody? Carolyn, this isn't right that you're cutting how many shifts started.
Excuse me, excuse me, there are procedures.
I thought you said no interruptions, you've interrupted me.
No, sir, I'm sorry.
I always thought that it was rude to interrupt somebody.
She's the chairman of this.
No, this isn't right.
Now we know why you brought down it, Carolyn.
This is ridiculous, Carolyn.
I will relate that to the budget in a moment, sir.
Do you have some comments about the budget?
I have comments, yes, sir. Let me get to them.
Please make those comments, sir.
In other words, this budgeting was done in 2014, you as the treasurer. So, oh my goodness, something happened between 2014 and now? I don't know what it is. I don't either. Let me read my other comments. What I'd like, and I know you would like it quiet, is if I finish a sentence, and the crowd agrees with me, just raise your hand. No noise, no fabric, no disruption, just raise your hand if you agree with the sentence. First sentence, "I believe the Niles Public Library provides an invaluable service to the taxpayers." Everybody accept the word. Okay. Second sentence, "The library is essential to the vitality of our community and the quality of life for all residents." I'm just reading sentences, sir. Okay, looks like everybody's on that. Third sentence, "Highly qualified library staff is pivotal to the continued growth and excellence of our library." It's okay, we accept the word agrees. Last sentence, "I would appreciate the opportunity to participate in the continuation of the library's growth and streamlining of costs to the taxpayers as a public library district board trustee." A question for you, ma'am. Do those sentences sound familiar? They're yours. This is from the 2013 candidate statement to the Daily Herald. I don't know what's changed since, but...
Excuse me, sir, do you have any relevant information about tonight's budget?
Yes, I think people ought to know what you're doing, ma'am. What your opinion is and what your opinion was.
You know, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask, if we sit down, if you don't have any information regarding tonight's budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please call the next person.
Kathy Toye?
Kathy Toye. The budget calls for eliminating all outreach programs to schools, daycare centers, and preschools. Our board treasurer has suggested the school should bus students to the library. If schools did this, the cost to the taxpayer would be more than it is now by shifting the financial responsibility to the schools and by employing a bus driver and taking more time to move multiple people instead of one librarian driving to a little school. Daycares and preschools don't have buses. Daycares were hit hard by the pandemic, some of them even having to close down. They don't have extra money to bus students or buy more books or hire storytellers. Here is a statement from District 63. For many years, the library has been one of our strongest community partners. While each of our schools does have a small library, the Niles Main District Library's excellent youth services department effectively leverages our literacy education with onsite services, bringing deeper and more extensive resources to the table than we have at our disposal. And it matters that these professional librarians come into our school. Transporting our students to the library during a school day would be costly in terms of time, resources, and taxpayer dollars. Simply busing our entire student population once to and from the library would cost approximately $6,500 and would result in the loss of state mandated instructional time, which is extremely regimented and precise. Same services have been provided much more efficiently for many years by youth services staff visiting each school. School-library partnerships are common, enriching both institutions and positively impacting youth, eliminating this critical outreach program which negatively impacts thousands of students and their families in District 63 alone. And a statement from District 71. For hundreds of our students, the school-based programming provided by the library's youth services team in our schools is their first and sometimes strongest link to the library. A true partner in education, the Niles Main District Library, has helped enrich our literacy curriculum for many years, helping to create lifelong readers. The library's school liaisons have highly specialized children literature knowledge that they share with our students and staff. Removing these activities would be a significant loss for our community and adversely impact our children. The budget calls for eliminating all outreach programs to nine senior facilities that were being served by librarians. Our board treasurer has done no research to see if these senior facilities have staff who can take the time to act as librarians for their residents. Senior facilities would have to increase staff hours to accomplish this task, resulting in increased fees to residents of already expensive senior housing. Seniors account for 30% of the population of Niles. While it might not be tax money, these are taxpaying residents who are likely on fixed incomes that our board treasurer and board president frequently say they are trying to help by decreasing the library's portion of their tax. Our board treasurer mentioned at one meeting that residents don't live very long in these facilities anyway. Not all senior facilities are nursing homes. Seniors live in senior living facilities for many years. Some of these seniors are homebound in their senior assisted facilities. Our board president says they aren't cutting homebound services, but they are cutting outreach to these facilities. The budget cuts down on volunteer expenses and professional development, yet didn't touch the $3,000 trustee expense. Volunteers include seniors, teens who need service hours, and people with special needs. The library bought t-shirts for our board president and vice president for the parade because they committed to marching, but they didn't bother to show up. The trustees are themselves a source of wasted money. I believe you should use some of that $3,000 in the trustee expense for parliamentarians to educate you on the correct processes for these things. Thank you.
Liz Marpia Ash?
Hello. My name is Liz Marpia Ash, and I have lived in Niles since my husband and I bought our homes here in 2012. As a lifelong lover of books and libraries, I would never in my wildest imagination believe that someday I would need to speak out against defunding a library. Here we are. My first issue is with reducing the hours to 54 per week. The reasoning for this, I'm told, is that people have been buying their books on Amazon and aren't coming back to the library. I fully admit, I did order books on Amazon and also independent bookstores last year. Independent bookstores, I think, as we all know, needed a lot of support, and I also personally don't have a lot of time to read books. I like to own them so I can read them at, like, a latently slow pace. But even though I will continue to purchase books from Amazon or bookstores, as that is my personal preference, that does not mean I won't still use the library. It doesn't have to be in either or situation. Sometimes there are books I need to read that I don't want to own. Sometimes I need to use the color printer at the library. I bring my books to get, I bring my kids to get books. My 12-year-old likes to rent out Nintendo Switch games or old Japanese Godzilla movies. And to be perfectly honest, with three kids in my house, sometimes I just want to come to the library for some peace and quiet. During the pandemic, when I was cooped up at home trying to do e-learning with my kids and working remotely, I can't tell you how many times I fantasized about working in one of the quiet study rooms at the library. So now that the world is ready to open up again, I ask you, why do we want less hours at the library? Prior to the pandemic, my favorite time to come was on Sunday afternoons. My husband and I both work full-time. Additionally, my daughter has a rare genetic disorder that requires her to attend multiple therapy appointments during the week and on Saturdays. Sundays are the most convenient days for my family to visit the library for some much-needed solace. And I know we are not the only family with our own story of either accessibility or time management issues that would love increased hours. 54 hours just does not make sense right now, especially since neighboring libraries such as Park Ridge, Glenview, Skokie, and Morton Grove are all open between 65 and 72 hours. I would love hours that can be more reflective of the diverse needs of our community. The library should be a welcoming place to all and not just those that have the convenience of coming during the shortened hours. I also strongly disagree with the cuts to professional development for the staffs. From one of the previous meetings I attended, it was mentioned that employees did not need to attend conferences, because surely if there was some major advancement in the field of library science, they could just read about it in the paper the next day. I cannot believe we have elected trustees that would show such little regard for employees at the very institution they are overseeing. I am on the Board of Directors for the nonprofit organization that supports my daughter's genetic disorder. Professional development has been critical to the creation of our organization's programs. I have attended conferences in person, I've attended some virtually, and I have simply read about the ones I have not attended. There is, hands down, no replacement for attending a conference in person. It's not only about the information you learn from attending the speaker sessions, it's about the diversity of the people you meet in person and the exchange of ideas that come about. You say you want the library to be more efficient, right? Professional development is where they will learn about new efficiencies. The political and economic environments in which libraries operate mean that we need to be flexible, agile, and continually evolving. In order for a library to embrace change, its workforce must continually develop its professional and technical skills. Ultimately, it seems like there's a bit of mixed messaging going on here. I don't understand the overall goal of these budget cuts. I'm hearing that it's to save the tax, save money for the taxpayers. But going to the library instead of buying books on Amazon does save us money. So which is it? Is everyone spending all their money at Amazon and not coming to the library? Or is everyone hurting from the pandemic and needs to save money on their taxes? These budget cuts seem to amount to about $40 to $50 in savings on my property taxes. That's about what it costs for my family of five to eat out at Culver's once a week. I am more than happy to pay my $40 to $50 to keep the Niles Main District Library and their employees, who work very hard and are very good at what they do, and very skilled, and not wastes of space, from falling below the standard so many of us have come to know and love. I admit I have not paid much attention in the past to what's been going on in the local government. With my three kids and a full-time job and my own work on a nonprofit, I've had little time for much else. But these budget cuts and glaring lack of respect for this beautiful institution have forced me to pay attention. People like libraries. You start making cuts to a library, and clearly, people wake up and take notice. And I hope that some of you will really think about the negative attention you have brought to our village, all because of a library. Do we want our library to be merely a room with books? Or do we want to keep it as it is, a vibrant and beloved center of our community? Our David Lankeys wrote, "Bad libraries build collections, good libraries build services, great libraries build communities." We have a great library, and we'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Sam?
Sam?
Okay, I'm not going to go through all the rest, like these other people here. I can say one thing and one thing.
I'm going to make sure everybody here is...
I'm a little slow, I'm a little old. I've been around here for about 55, 60 years. I don't look that old, but that's how long I've been in Niles. Now, as far as I know, we are still a democracy, okay? We, you, were duly elected by the people. Let's give you a chance to perform before we start raking you all over the coat. You have just gotten here, you haven't done anything yet, and they're all criticizing you for not being able to do anything. You haven't had a chance. Let's give them a chance. We have a government that was just elected, we got to give them a chance. We don't like it, we'll vote you out, and I'll be the first one to vote you, vote against you. But at this point, you are elected by the people of Niles. You should be able to do and perform your duties without all this nonsense.
Bob Zalesny?
Bob Zalesny. Just a reminder to everyone, we need to discuss tonight's budget. That's the purpose of this appropriation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Zalesny, and I got your feet, Sam. I've lived in Niles 63 years. I don't know, does anybody on the board or anybody in this room know the model for the American Library Association? Can they tell me?
That's right here, very short.
So let's see. The best reading for the greatest number at the least cost, and that's what we are asking for. We voted these people in a new board so that we, so that we could take a look at the budget, because this thing is nothing but a runaway train here. This library wants our insatiable, but there's limited to funds, and you got to think about the taxpayers. Some people say it's only $50. $50 to another person means quite a bit now. I don't know if you noticed what's going on with the gas prices, our taxes are going up.
Excuse me.
Their budget can't afford it. I want this board, I'm so proud of them, I'm so happy that they're there, that they got elected, they worked hard to be there. It says in the paper that they don't love the library, and that's not true. They love the library, they love Niles, they put blood and sweat for years and years working in the village. But, 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 I'm going to tell you what they hate. They hate wasting money, and they're trying to save our money. So God bless you. Continue what you're doing, give you a chance. There are no programs getting cut. The yoga program did not get chopped, but I don't understand why... $50 to another person means quite a bit now. I don't know if you noticed what's going on with the gas prices, our taxes are going up.
Excuse me.
I'm talking, their budget can't afford it. I want this board, I'm so proud of them, I'm so happy that they're there, that they got elected, they worked hard to be there. It says in the paper that they don't love the library, and that's not true. They love the library, they love Niles, they put blood and sweat for years and years working in the village. But, 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 I'm gonna tell you what they hate. They hate wasting money, and they're trying to save our money. So God bless you. I'm saying, God bless you. Continue what you're doing, give you a chance. There are no programs getting cut. The yoga program did not get chopped, but I don't understand why the yoga even in the library. We have it at the Park District and we have it across the street. You can't be having multiple things of people. Well, I'm just saying, the yoga program's still in the budget. Everyone's telling me all these programs are cut, and then what, what is the cut?
Excuse me, Bob.
What books have been cut?
Excuse me, you need to address the board, but you need to talk specifically about the budget. That's the purpose of it.
What have you cut from the budget? I don't believe they cut everything. They left us everything in the budget. Give them a chance, let's see what happens.
Margaret Carr?
Excuse me, before we begin with our next speaker, could the audience please try to be respectful of everyone's comments? Thank you.
Trustees, counselor? The board has the right and obligation to assure that our tax dollars are being spent efficiently and prudently. I strongly value leadership that watches the bottom line, asks meaningful questions on spending, and thinks of citizens when making the decision. The budget document published for comment, however, does not exhibit this. You are either demonstrating a complete lack of attention to detail or have crafted a plan to play hide the dollars. I see two examples in your proposed budget of questionable accounting. Example one. Basic payroll accounting demonstrates that when compensation dollars go down, social security dollars also go down. Apparently, the library board does not recognize this principle as the amount allocated to the social security remains the same even with the lowered compensation amounts. Based on what I know about the social security taxes, the amount allocated, I should be, I figured out to be around $42,000 less than what's currently listed on your proposed budget. Are you hiding the $42,000 in social, in the social security bucket to spend elsewhere? Because of the proposed reduction in labor costs, what else have you apparently properly not taken into account? Workers' comp, benefit allocations, unemployment insurance? It makes me wonder what other numbers in this budget were pulled out of the air. Example two. You have cut practically every line item except, of course, consulting. That's no surprise. In your proposed ordinance, you have added $100,000 over what the library professionals felt was needed. Why the large increase in consulting dollars? Is it because you have contracted with expensive, unqualified cronies as payback? Is it because you have cut staff dollars so much that you have to contract with outsiders now to get the talent you need to run the library? Or is it due to a misplaced digit, adding a one where there shouldn't be one? If that's an error, again, this points to lack of attention to detail and oversight that rests solely on the writers and the promoters of this budget. You are proposing cutting hours, services, building maintenance, purchasing of new books and materials. It's clear, those numbers are clearly listed and comparing to what the professionals put to what is currently written in the ordinance. This budget is too austere. It is, if you can believe it. 12% less than was spent in 2011. 2011, a decade ago. Who spends less today than they did 10 years ago? Everyone. Everyone has increased in costs. I don't know how you can think that you are maintaining and enhancing the library's mission with cuts like these. By making these changes and cuts, you are also putting at risk grant money and awards. These, this is free valuable money you are leaving on the table. Money that can further improve and bring recognition both to the community and the library. I recognize the need to get a budget in place timely. I worked, I had, I was in charge of a budget, it had to be in timely. But this proposed budget is not one that we need. Numbers seem to have been pulled from the air. No attention was paid to the library professionals that provided advice, and there are either glaring errors or blatant attempts to hide unauthorized or unnecessary spending. So trustees, do you support a slash and burn in the name of fiduciary oversight? Or do you support a thoughtful, professionally guided and informed approach to efficient spending? You each have an individual vote. And each of you will have to live with your vote. Let's hope for the community's sake you vote wisely. Use your own conscience and do not act like a puppet in a misguided attempt to vote as someone else tells you to vote. Each of you, as a trustee, have the responsibility of assuring that the Niles Main Library continues to remain an outstanding example of a community library. Thank you.
Mary?
Try, try it one more time, they can't hear you.
Mary, C-U-N-Y. In my opinion, I'll go along with what she said. You're putting, in my opinion, money and efficiency over learning, good progress programs, informative information, this place gives you information from books, from programs. And you're building leaders. I think in today's world, we're gonna need good leaders, and you get that by building community. And this library is a form of community. You get what you pay for, as they say. I come here a lot. I've seen it. I, I worked in CPS 34 years, proud to say it. It was a challenging job. Your job is challenging also. You have jewels here, and I hope that you know it, because I know it. And I've been coming, I learned a lot of technology skills. I didn't know any technology, very little. Now, I'd say I'm pretty proficient in it, thanks to downstairs and all their help. You cut those people down in the tech lab, they have to help a lot of seniors. I've witnessed it personally. And they, they can't, that desk cannot handle just one person, believe me. That man needs it, and then someone's on the phone. This is an award-winning library. They have won for your, for this community, $10,000 in money. Doesn't that count for something? And this turnout, this rally, in my opinion, I mean, the people, they want to save the library. These people value libraries. So save the library. Money is one thing, but forming a human being that is a good person, that's what you need in the world today. You can have all the money and then what do they do? Shoot, rob, everything else. So let's spend our money wisely, yes, but let's not put money and efficiency over building a human being, including children, students, families, and seniors who use this place. Thank you.
Robert Burress, U-R-U-S, I believe?
My wife and I have lived in Niles for 51 years. For 50 of those years, we have paid real estate taxes to the Park District, the School District, and the Niles Main Library. From the years of 2013 or 2003 to 2019, I have compiled the taxes paid to the Park District and Niles Main District as a comparison. The result is a 50.73% reduction in the Park District and a 16.54% reduction in the library. The budget that was submitted by the library provides the breakdown of monies spent, whereas the new tentative budget reduced in half does not justify your resource allocation by showing how you've addressed the inefficiencies and saving opportunities. Your responsibility is to support growth for library services to the community. Remembering the goal, it's not to save money, but to spend funds wisely for efficient and effective library service. Be a library user, listen to the community, practice presentation skills, foster quality relationships, advocate for excellence and adequate funding. Devise a strategy plan for a library service and update three to five years. Provide a model of exemplary performance. We have attended several of your board meetings. They represent an atmosphere of unwillingness to share the responsibility that you were elected to provide. Have you no shame? Have you no sense of decency? In closing, why are we trying to fix something that is not broken? My name is Robert.
Pam Wolf?
Hello, I'm Pam Wolf. That's Pam like the cooking spray, Wolf like the animal with an extra F at the end for fun. Hierarchy of needs. Food, water, shelter. This library is a shelter. It is a shelter for the lonely. It is a shelter for teens who might not have another place to go. It is a shelter for the underserved. It is a place where those of disparate minority communities, religions, sexual orientations, races, ethnicities can come, be served, find things about their interests. You want to cut funding to get new books on that, but that's not the biggest problem. The biggest problem I saw in the budget, one line item that was cut, the roof. Now, back in 2013, we had flooding. I had one box of books that got caught in the flood and was destroyed. $100 worth of books. Now, this was one little file box. Luckily, we had insurance, because also we had, my, my parents had done their job on getting the house all set up so that it didn't have its own leaks or stuff like that. We know that the roof needs refurbishment. It was taken out. I happen to have used to work for insurance companies. They don't like to pay out money when you don't actually take the time to ameliorate problems before they happen. We have a shelter here.
Excuse me, could you try to?
I am talking.
Discuss the budget, please.
I am.
This has nothing to do with the budget.
I am. So. So the budget, the line item, the line item was removed so that we are not going to have a refurbishment of the roof in this budget. Now, the reason this is a problem is because down the line, if that roof is not fixed, there is going to come a storm and that roof will fail. And what happens then is not only do we lose books, not only do we have to have more repairs done to the roof, but we lose ceilings, we lose floors. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars of damages done that we, the taxpayers, will have to take care of at some point. Why? Because of short-sighted budget slashing now. That is not fiduciary responsibility. That is short-sighted budget cutting for the sake of 14%. And I want to say this from my mother. My mother comes here more than I do, and we went out to breakfast on Sunday. That cost us the amount.
This is irrelevant.
Yes, it is.
Please.
We would like to, we would, we say that we would like to spend that much. My mother would like to spend that much on her homeowners, her homeowners' taxes for the budget to keep the roof on the budget. That is a budget commentary, but since it's against what you want, I guess I'm going to be cut off. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Guarino. My family and I have been residents of Niles for the past 25 years. We consider the Niles Library to be one of the most valuable assets the village offers. Our son, who is on the autism spectrum, loves the library so much, he became the first person with such a disability to be offered an internship here at the Niles Main District Library while attending Main South High School. He is currently pursuing a degree in library science at Elmhurst University. This is just one example of which I'm certain there are many that demonstrates how this library inspires us to reach ever higher. I am also the artistic director of the Shakespeare Project of Chicago, a professional theater company that with the support of the Niles Main District Library and other libraries, has been bringing performances of Shakespeare's plays to Chicago-area libraries for the past 25 years. I want to take a moment to reflect on what we do in the spirit of opening up the value of the library's public programs and the reality that the library is more than just books. And we can't thank the Niles Main District Library and our other library partners nearly enough for making this happen. We have produced our theatrical reading season of four Shakespeare plays here at Niles since 2012. We also perform at the Highland Park, Willmett, Vernon area.
Excuse me, sir.
Mount Prospect, Elmhurst.
Excuse me, sir, could you try to?
I'm demonstrating the value of our public programs. Value is more than just dollars and cents.
That's wonderful. And I, I need you to address the relevant budget item.
Oh, oh, make America great again, huh buddy? Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. Your guy doesn't even read books.
Sir, you're out of line. I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, sir.
You know what, this library is gonna be a porn house on 42nd Street.
I'm sorry, sir, you need to sit down, you're out of order, sir. I'm sorry, sir, you're out of order, please take your seat.
No, I'm not done.
I'm sorry, sir.
No, no.
You're out of order.
Nope, nope.
These arboths are inappropriate.
That was inappropriate.
Sir.
It's my time to speak here.
Sir, you need.
I have a right to speak here.
Sir, you need to speak about the budget and not get sidetracked.
All right, we're getting there. All right, let's get right to the budget.
And sir, please address the board. Thank you, sir. Sir, please address the board, thank you.
All right, here's the budget. One of the then candidates, now a trustee, said in a 41-second YouTube video, "We will eliminate wasteful spending and bring more transparency to the library." A recent study showed that NMDL spending is about in the middle compared with peer libraries. And as far as transparency goes, the actions demonstrated thus far by the newly-elected board members couldn't possibly be more opaque, as evidenced by their stonewalling on numerous FOIA requests. The campaign statement went on to say, "We're going to initiate new programs and make the current ones more relevant." and make the current ones more relevant." Well, what are these programs? And as far as making the current programs more relevant, how are they falling short? Who is not being well-served? Those of us who love the library are happy to help make it better for all. And the statement continues, "We are the change that will save our library." Well, I, like many here, were not aware that I, our library needed saving, but now it does. Roof repairs have been recommended since at least 2015. Unless immediate action is taken, the library roof may literally cave in, and then we wouldn't have a library anymore, and many of us would never be able to afford to buy them on Amazon, as another trustee has suggested. And where would we meet to discuss our books? Where would we go to get expert advice on how to find things we didn't even know we liked? Where could we take our children to discover their own sense of wonder and magic that comes from the encounter with words and ideas that are not their own? Over half of the families in Niles speak more than one language. My family is not one of them. But I might like the opportunity to learn another language, and a library with books and tapes would be a great resource. And I would like my neighbors and their children, who may be struggling with English, to feel the welcome of their native language in a place that can bring them the richness of English as well. These things won't hinder the adoption of the language of the country they live in. By 1890, more than 1,000 German-language newspapers were being published in the United States, and the children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren of those immigrants have managed our language as well. Houses of worship all across Chicago offer services in a multitude of languages. Just one example. Saint John Breebough.
Excuse me, sir.
Offers mass in Polish every week and has done so for years.
Excuse me, sir, this has nothing to do with the budget. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, one last point. We'll get to it.
No, sir, we need to get to it now. You're gonna have to have a seat.
I'm getting to it now, here it is. So what's a library trustee supposed to do? Here are a few important elements. Okay, this library board trustee manual says, and I quote, "Support growth of library services to the community, remembering that the goal is not to save the community money." That's in the manual, okay? But spend the funding wisely for efficient and effective library service. Well, the fact that there is no evidence that, that the library's spending has been out of line. Again, we have been judged to be in the middle compared with our peers. And by the way, if the library does not repair its roof, there is no way it can provide effective library services. All right. I'm going to finish with one last thing, and thank you for your indulgence. The introduction to the library manual. "The public library is the heart and soul of every community, and the board of trustees ensures that it remains strong, vibrant, and relevant to patrons with a wide variety of needs, hopes, and dreams." Thank you.
Okay, Margaret, they should be able to hear you now.
Evan Theodoreopoulos.
Good evening. My name is Evan Theodoreopoulos, and I'm an incoming seventh grader at Cola School. I am speaking for all the kids that live in Niles and surrounding areas. Taking away the outreach at my school and the promotion of reading at my school isn't fair to the kids. We are trying to deprive kids, and even seniors too, of having access to books from our public library. It is unfair. It is not just your library, but ours too. As elected officials, you are supposed to represent all voices in Niles, including mine, the seniors, and people who work here. We all count, and we all matter. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Kolesnik. My pronouns are they, she, and he. Yeah, hi, welcome to the year 2021. Anyways.
Excuse me, excuse me. All right.
It's, I'm introducing myself, so I'm not allowed to introduce myself. Anyways, quiet. As, so I'm a teenager, I'm an immigrant in America. At my school, at my high school, I spent there until 7:00 PM. My Saturdays were busy. The only day I had to go to the library was the Sunday. You're planning to cut the hours so I wouldn't have that time to go to the library anymore because I was busy. You're thinking that people buy books on Amazon. My mother used to work three jobs. I was an avid reader when I was younger. She would not be able to afford all of those books that I read by the day. So by you thinking that we people could afford to buy all of our books on Amazon is crazy. I'm sorry, that's crazy. Um, and judging by how many people, last thing I'm going to say, judging by how many people out there are against you versus how many people are here to support you, you're clearly not supporting the community. So whose boots are you looking in? How good do they taste?
Check to make sure.
Yeah, we can't hear her. Are one of those others?
Take the one on the end.
Mike's better.
Sardip Chuhan.
S U R D E P.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sardip Chuhan. I'm 25. And my entire life, I've lived here in Niles. But more importantly, my entire life, I've gone to this library. And what this library means to this community is a place where everyone, all identities, all races, can visit, can learn, can escape. And these budget cuts will reprehensively damage this community. And your justification for these budget cuts is absurd. It's wrong. It's, it's wrong morally on one level, but it's also ideologically not what this community stands for. And you should all be embarrassed of yourselves that even a proposal like this was introduced. So all I'd like to say is that I support the people that work here. I support the children. I support the senior citizens that need this place for internet services, for printing things, for a multitude of reasons that you are not considering. And just remember, your actions will have consequences. And to really think about why you would do this. So I'm here to save the library, and please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Before the next speaker, I just want to remind everyone in the audience, please do not make any comments to the speakers. Keep your comments to yourself, please. We're trying to maintain a decorum of respect for everyone. Thank you.
Daniel Bedoya.
Hola señores y señoras. Buenas tardes, buenas noches. I'm sorry. I know how non-English languages make you feel all scared and nervous and uncomfortable, so I'll meet you on your level. Good evening, trusted board. My name is Daniel Bedoya. I am commenting on your proposed budget cuts to the Niles Public Library, obviously. Also, let me make it clear, I am a queer Latino. If you cut me off during my comment, it is racist and homophobic. I don't make the rules, there are cameras. Anyways, I'm not going to waste my time here to outline the ludicrous budget cuts you are so eager to pass. We're all aware of these atrocities. You're working diligently to commit. I'm here to put on the public record, this will not stand. Your budget cuts are an attack on working-class, low-income families who, let's not forget, are predominantly people of color. You know, people who are not represented on your board nor whose interests are reflected in the Caucasian-laden bodies onstage tonight. This is a library, is an institution of the free exchange of knowledge and ideas. Your conservative politics have no place in these halls. The budget cuts simply serve to strip citizens of access to knowledge and resources that keep them informed voters. That's what you want, right? You relish an ignorant citizenry because the more people who don't know when local elections are, that benefit to you. Those are voters you work to keep in the dark because they had full access to libraries' resources. They'd more easily recognize your attempts at capital gain and voted against you so fast their sonic boom would blast your old bones to dust. Your efforts with this budget are to create a silent majority that enables your power. Your very livelihoods are predicated on 8% voter turnout, so you can cast away all campaign promises to pave more pathways for the conservative legal project that is halting this nation's social progress for centuries to come. But we will no longer stay silent. We see you. Niles sees you. We recognize your intentions, and we want you to know we will make the rest of your respective terms as board of trustee members an absolute nightmare for you if you follow through on this budget proposal. Do not get me mixed up, this is not a threat. This is a promise for collective, civilly disobedient action. You can expect angry trade citizens like myself to be at the forefront of all future protests, demonstrations, and occupy movements that seek to dismantle your power. This is a public library. This is a space for progress, not industry. This is our space, not just yours. And worth noting for the right-wing conservative freaks that you all are, it is absolutely mind-boggling you're cutting something like the Veterans History Breakfast, which proves that you do not care one bit about patriotic or American values. Your decisions for cuts are based on nothing more than personal prejudice and career interests. I know I might be introducing some lofty concepts that outweigh the collective brainpower on the stage. So here are three concise action items for you to consider. One, vote no on your unintelligible budget proposal tomorrow evening. Two, immediately after voting no, resign from your positions. All of you, I mean it. Three, go sign up for a library card and check out a book written by a queer person of color because it's abhorrently clear you've never read one in your entire ancient, outmoded preface to the unending lives.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir, I'm addressing you.
From being brainwashed by austerity politics that have brought our planet to the brink of collapse, and you willfully lack the social awareness of the function of public spaces and therefore cannot be trusted to operate one. Trust me, trust us. If you vote in favor of the budget, your community will ensure you have no hope with any of us in Niles, Illinois. Been chip in the hoes, fuck you all, I yield my time.
Sandra Lase, L.A.A.S.E. Repeat it, I don't think. Sandra Lase, L.A.A.S.E. Yeah.
I am Sandra Lase. And as I commented outside, that's a hard act to follow. The exemplary in current Niles programs and operations need to be fully supported. As a therapist and an educator, people, I, one of the basic tenets is that people learn in different ways. And the Niles Public Library is exemplary in that regard. People, they have well-balanced programs that, that can convey information and learning auditorily, visually, and kinesthetically. And by kines, you probably all know auditory and visual. And the kinesthetic is by movement and action so that you have a yoga for seniors in the makers' lab. And people that come for these programs also make use of the library in other ways. And as was brought up, the library is the heart and soul of the community. Therefore, there needs to be highly qualified staff and support for their development, for their professional development. Boards make policy. They do not run the library. And in looking at the budget and what the board wants to do, I would, I would say that they are unqualified to run the library. Also, the development of a budget is based on a plan that reflects the needs of the community. The budget, the money, follows the needs, not the other way around. And the needs are determined by the professional library staff. I want to reinforce that the opposition to cutting the hours has been discussed. And I think that in this day and age, people are busy. They need, some people only have the weekends to spend time with their children or to, and to do research. And those professional librarians are, are able to share resources that, that patrons are not even aware of. And regarding the roof, since you're so concerned about money, we could bring, do we bring umbrellas when it rains? Or will the library be renting them to patrons to get more money?
Royce Hamel.
I don't think they.
I don't think I can hear you. I know.
Give him a chance, slow down. Okay, now.
Royce Hamel.
Hi, my name is Royce Hamel. I work at Pastimes in Niles and Gulf Mill. You may have seen me before, so hi, everybody. So I actually have a couple of questions for everyone here, and that's all I'm going to say, is what would happen if you were a kid forced to assimilate into another culture? And you want to cut budgets to other languages? What if my first language wasn't English? It is, but my second language is Japanese. Thank you.
Meg Newman. I'll do it again.
We don't hear.
Meg Newman.
Oh, she's here.
Longtime library fan, first-time speaker. I've lived in Niles for about four years now. So me and my husband lived in the city before. We wanted to find someplace to raise our family. And we did a lot of research. Niles seemed like a great place. Unfortunately, the events of the last couple months, weeks, feels like years, has really led me to question, is Niles the right place? Do our elected officials have the right things in mind when it comes to our library budget? Couple comments that I specifically want to address. Some of the comments that have been made by, let's say, this half of the board have been that there are times when nobody's in the library. I actually am a bit of a data nerd, so I pulled up what is the actual library utilization. We're currently averaging about 50 people an hour every hour the library is open. A low point has been 10 people. There have not been less than 10 people using the library in any given hour during the library's been opened. So in the last, since we expanded hours. When we look at that, I don't understand where you're coming from when you say the library only needs to be open 54 hours. We've had a peak of 126 people using the library in a single hour. When I come to the library, I bring my two small boys. George loves the children's wing. Every single time he comes up, he wants to run and say hi to the librarians, every single one he sees. He likes to pretend that he's Miss April and play with. He likes to pretend that he's Miss April and play with, that he's giving his own storytimes. If you're cutting hours and cutting these librarians, you are cutting my son's ability to interact with this library. When there's 126 people, are they always going to pay attention to a three-year-old who wants to talk about construction books? How many other people use librarians? That's kind of what I want to see. Does anybody else ever come in here and say like, hey, I need some help? Yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me, you do need to not address the crowd, but address the board.
Okay. Does anybody on the board ever come into the library and ask the librarian for help?
This is not. I'm sorry, this isn't a question-and-answer session. We're just here to hear your input.
You said I needed to address the board, so I did. So there we go. So I would like for you to look at your own data. Before you're making assumptions that 54 hours is enough in a year, look at the people that you are supposed to be serving and then make some judgments, as opposed to just randomly cutting hours and cutting budgets. One other point I want to make is around cleaning. You say that this 54 hours have to do with COVID. You have cut COVID supplies to zero and cut the cleaning budget. My son is three years old, he's not able to be vaccinated. It is a concern. If you are saying that you have fewer hours because of COVID, but you are also not taking proper COVID precautions, what does that mean for your patrons? Thank you.
Peggy Rings.
Thank you. I speak in opposition to the proposed budget cuts. The proposed $1.5 million in budget cuts are reckless and unnecessary. The community is returning, is demanding a return to normal operations. We want the library to be back at normal operating hours. The proposed budget is a step backward, curtailing operations and ignoring the public's desire to return to pre-pandemic levels of service. The reduction in the operating budget will make the library less accessible at the very time services are needed for pandemic recovery. The proposed budget weakens an important community institution and harms Niles' reputation as a great place to live. Our library services do not match the standards of those offered by neighboring communities. One way this is evident is in the hours of operation. The proposed budget supports a library that is only open 54 hours a week. This compares to Morton Grove, 69 hours, Park Ridge, 70 hours, Glenview, 72 hours, and Skokie, 75 hours. 54, 75. This is not an issue of size. Even before the drastic cuts, our library's per capita spending of $107 was lower than neighboring libraries, even some serving communities smaller than ours. Thanks to excellent news reporting on the issues, I know that fact. The budget fundamentally curtails the public mission of the library. The library is not a place. It is a vital community service. The proposed budget cuts will hollow out the library and impact the most vulnerable members of our community, eliminating outreach to schools and senior centers and potentially reducing resources for community-oriented programs like the Veterans History Project. The proposed budget fails to improve the library's lending collection. Already, I must fulfill many of my borrowing requests through the interlibrary loan program. Often waiting weeks for books to arrive, I'm grateful that we are a CCS library, a member of a group of 28 libraries in the north and northwest suburbs that lend to each other. But I wonder, what kind of a partner are we? Are we ethically meeting our responsibilities as a member of a lending library network by cutting the budget for acquisitions? Draconian cuts to staffing and professional development undermine the greatest asset of any library, a highly trained and high-performing staff. Ongoing professional development is not frivolous spending. It is essential to maintain a modern library and an expected employee benefit in most knowledge-based industries, private or public. The impact on staff morale is an ignored and underestimated price of the budget reductions. We must give credit where credit is due. We have an award-winning library because of our talented and engaged staff. Please allow me to express my personal experience related to the proposed library budget. Let me share how the library serves me. Introducing me to new people and ideas. I just finished reading the Pulitzer Prize-winning, Evicted: Poverty and Profit in the American City by Matthew Desmond. What an amazing nonfiction book. I borrowed the large print edition from the library because, well, I'm old. My eyes don't see so well. But I can see what the proposed budget cuts will do to this library and to this community. I draw parallels between the worlds I read about and the one I live in. Desmond's book talks about the difference stable housing makes for families and communities. The reliable resources of a public library are similarly a source of stability, an asset to our community. Our library must be maintained as a warm and welcoming place. It is, in fact, a refuge for some children, a ladder up to others, a lifeline for seniors who might otherwise experience isolation. The disastrous cuts that the proposed budget will require are simply not serving our community. The budget as presented represents a breach in your fiduciary role as elected officials. I am asking you to do your jobs and table tomorrow's vote to adopt ordinance 2103. Go back to the drawing board, learn what the word trustee means, and understand what your community wants and needs. Thank you.
Kate Levinson.
Good evening. My name is Kate Levinson, and I've worked here for the past 12, almost 13 years. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of myself and my coworkers who decided to form our union with APSME Council 31. Fred Rogers said, "Listening is where love begins." Listening to ourselves and then listening to our neighbors. I love this library. I love the patrons who come here and the people I work with. We all do. And it's because we are listening to each other that these proposed drastic and devastating cuts are so frustrating. We are on the front lines every day. We are the ones who know what this library needs most. But you dismiss our suggestions without even listening to them. We are the professionals. We deserve respect. And we really deserve a voice. We've dedicated our lives and careers to making Niles Main District Library the special place that it is. This place makes our whole community stronger. And that's why we decided to form our union. To have a voice in this process, and it's only a matter of time until our union is certified, and you will have to sit down and negotiate with us. We urge you, urge you to stop these planned cuts. We ask you to sit down with the people who work here and negotiate a budget that is fair for everyone. We all want Niles Main District Library to continue to thrive. This is the way. Mr. Rogers said something else that I encourage you to consider. There are three ways to ultimate success. The first one is to be kind. The second one is to be kind. And the third one, does anyone know? Is to be kind. Thank you. This is the way.
Nathan Bragg.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Tonight's a nice night. And to be perfectly honest, I think I would rather be out riding my bicycle. But instead, I'm here with my friends and neighbors, supporting a beloved institution. The proposed budget starves the library of much-needed resources. The economy is currently thriving, and there is no reason to cut the budget and services. Again, there is no reason. I support the library, and I am particularly appreciative of the amazing staff who has frequently helped me with my needs at the library. I want and need more hours open for me to come and utilize this important service. I advocate for a budget that increases, rather than decreases, library services. Thank you.
Jeanette Lee.
Good evening. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about the difference between irresponsible reckless spending and responsible spending. The budget that this board is planning on voting for tomorrow is full of budget cuts that affect staff and the community, like cutting over half a million dollars on purchasing actual library materials, you know, books, DVDs, the stuff a library is made out of. Or cutting over half a million dollars in payroll. Again, the people who actually keep the programs running and help the patrons with questions and technology and more. Even cutting cleaning services by $31,000 and eliminating the overnight cleaning crew. When will the carpets get vacuumed? How will our library be kept clean for the community? But at the same time, this budget increases administrative costs in a most fiscally irresponsible manner, like increasing the budget for consultants by $100,000. During the most recent election, supporters of this new board like to talk a lot about reckless spending. Let's compare our ideas of what this entails. I see reckless spending as hiring a new lawyer who charges more than our previous well-qualified lawyer did, and increasing the budget for legal fees. Not only that, but spending over $19,000 on legal fees in the month of June alone. Completely irresponsible. This is not a line item that benefits the community. Reckless spending, according to the supporters of this board, was when the library spent money on a dishwasher and a washing machine. These items were used to clean stuffed animals, Legos, and materials that patrons handle frequently. The spending was not reckless, but was for the health and safety of the community. Responsible. On the other hand, reckless spending is hiring a CPA firm when our library already employs a highly competent CPA. Why spend money to duplicate the work of someone who already works here? There have been complaints about duplicating programs, like having chair yoga both here and at the senior center. But chair yoga is a popular program, and it benefits the community. The CPA firm that's been added to the budget does not benefit the community and is certainly a more costly duplication of services than a yoga class. Reckless spending is hiring a consultant to report on the operations and technology of the library. Again, there are plenty of current library staff members that could answer any questions you might have about the operations and technology employed here. Why hire someone to duplicate this work? In comparison, this budget cuts the marketing expense of sending out a newsletter, decreasing its frequency and the number of pages. This is a marketing tool that lets the community, the taxpayers, know what's happening at the library. It is an expense that benefits the people and increases attendance. But this is the sort of thing that this board considers to be reckless spending. Anything that benefits the community, apparently, is reckless. And while this budget has room to hire an overly expensive lawyer, an unnecessary CPA firm, and a frivolous consultant, the actual hard-working and dedicated staff is being cut. Cutting payroll by over half a million dollars. Cutting the budget for buying books over half a million dollars. Even the cleaning budget that has been slashed and the overnight cleaning crew has been eliminated. But increasing spending on consultants and lawyers? Irresponsible, reckless, and unnecessary. The board's fiduciary responsibility is to support this local cultural institution, and this budget is failing at that job. You see, we have different definitions of reckless spending. This board seems to think that money spent on the good of the community is wasteful. I define irresponsible reckless spending as top-heavy administrative costs that benefit nobody. Except maybe the friends and allies of the board that are gaining financially by being awarded these lucrative contracts. Stop the reckless spending on redundant and unqualified contracts. Stop the reckless budget cuts that affect staff, the community, and the patrons of this library. Thank you.
Alyssa Danders.
Hey, good evening, everybody. We've heard from this board that the plan is not to fire anybody, but a reduction in payroll budget, in the payroll budget, by almost a half or a little over half a million dollars does contradict that previous statement. As you mentioned before, the pandemic had an impact on people's livelihood. So we are now discussing cutting hours and payroll in post-pandemic times, right? We can't rebuild our local economy by eliminating middle-class jobs. What you are doing now will, no, hold on, is hurting the library staff, the library patrons, and the community. I've heard the following statement from this board. "We aren't talking about people, we're talking about numbers." Well, guess what? When we discuss payroll, we discuss people. This board mentioned that some public comments were not factually correct. Well, let's talk about some numbers. So in that over half a million dollars that I just mentioned, only $144,000 plus, keep or take a couple hundred dollars. Only 144,000 plus, keep or take a couple hundred dollars is in vacancies. So basically, the majority of that amount, over $400,000, will be coming out of the current payroll to people who are currently working in this library. This board has expressed that they aren't cutting programs, however. A payroll cut of that amount. Will result in cutting programs as there won't be a staff to run them. Let me rephrase, by reducing by reducing library hours and tentatively reducing staff operating hours. You're limiting the amount of time the library team member can dedicate on developing new programs or properly maintaining current programs. Since this board is cutting the night cleaning services, the library staff will be busy cleaning the library instead of dedicating themselves to patrons and library programs. What you're planning on doing is allocating the library's professional staff to work that they are overqualified for. I doubt we can label this a smart allocation of resources. You know, the staff we may see organizing, we may see organizing the shelves at Menards Home Depot in Jewel. Are not responsible for answering the phones at the same time they are restocking or organizing. They're definitely not responsible for guiding customers through research on nutritional values on produce or the latest in construction materials. You cannot say that your goal is to enhance programs when you won't have the staff and the bandwidth to accomplish that. Another important item to bring up right now is the cut to professional development budget. The library staff as teachers, lawyers, dentists, accountants, and many others need to develop their professional skills and knowledge. If they remain stagnant, no one will go to them. Can you imagine a dentist learning the latest in teeth implant online? I don't think so, I can't. Librarians are professionals. We have our own Donablock, the Chair of the I Read Committee, a national program for summer reading that even the US Department of Defense follows, along with libraries across the country. This is a nationwide initiative and our librarians are in a leadership role. You are destroying what other people have been carefully building. So here's what thought. There is a word investing, investing is committing something in order to gain something, to make use of something for future benefit. When we invest in our kids, we usually spend, we spend money, we spend time, we put them through schools, sports program. When we invest in our employees, we usually spend, right, again, time and money. Come to mind, by making this library grow and evolve, you will be investing in our community. But you need to understand that you need to spend, not cut. Of course, that if you care, thank you.
Mark Newhagen.
Hello, good evening, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm incredibly nervous speaking today. Because I know many of the people on the trustee board personally and have eaten dinner and have at times at your houses. And so it is personally hurtful to hear that people I grew up with and I knew growing up. Doing this unjust budget cuts to a shared institution. I am a professional lay minister in the Catholic Church in Chicago. I have an education just as good as every Catholic priest that you know in this city and in this area. And when I heard that this. Budget cuts were happening. I had to come as a Catholic and as a minister. To say how unjust these are. A quick thing about theology that is affirmed by John Paul II Benedict XVI. Is a preferential option for the poor. That Catholics moving through the world, especially Catholic politicians. Are called that first and foremost in your mind. To keep the poor there. That the first thing you wake up and who you're serving are the poor. And not just the financially poor by going to a food bank. The poor who are the children who come to this library, who you're cutting. Services to their school in this budget. There's a lot of debate right now in America about whether the president should receive communion, right? Because he's not putting the poor first. I'm seeing here with the with the bounce back FOIA requests, with the reduced budget. With the removal of services for schools and the elderly, not to mention how this is going to affect those who are disabled. I don't see a lot of thinking about the poor happening here. I don't see a preferential option for the poor being played out in this room. And and some people will say that church people, people who serve God's church do not belong talking about this stuff. But if this is exactly where Jesus wants me to be and where wants everyone else to be as well. So you're still writing your stories. You're still writing. What people are going to think about you. And I pray. That you are known. At your at your funeral or at the end of your life, you are known as someone who served the poor. And not someone who cut. Programs and budget lines. That are for the poor. I want to let everyone know that I will be keeping this trustee board in my prayers tonight. And as the vote goes tomorrow. That we hold the poor in our heart. And when we pray and when we're at church. So God bless everyone here, I pray for you and God bless everyone in this room because we are doing God's work. Amen, I hope to see everyone and I hope. To talk to you personally sometime, not now, there's a lot going on as you can tell, but I hope that everyone here. Can put the poor first. As Pope Benedict and Pope John Paul has said, God bless you and God bless this library.
Nick Mazur or Mazur?
Yes, Nicholas Mazur, I was in Sun Times yesterday about the. I was in the Sun Times. Yeah, I was surprised that they cut the hours on Sunday and then Skokie's open on Sunday till six, it's weird and like the cuts are just ridiculous like. There are certain items, I looked at the. The funding, I mean, the spending on like $20,000 on the phone. Right now, we're in 21st century, why aren't you guys using VoIP? It's free, I. I don't have a SIM card in my cell phone, I use wifi. I have an app that has a free cell phone, I mean, free texting, voice, everything. I mean, get rid of that $20,000 bill for a phone, it's ridiculous. And like, there's some other items you could get rid of, you could get rid of it and get the funding from that. I mean, you could call me, consult me, I'm like, some of this stuff is ridiculous. $20,000 for a phone? How about $10,000 for furniture, I haven't seen $10,000 with the furniture in here. I mean, come on, everything's old, even the headphones, look at this. What year is this from? I think it was like 15, I forgot how much for funding for AV equipment, people are complaining, these sound like, I'm not going to say the word, but I mean, come on. So this funding, I mean, insurance, I have full coverage, I don't pay a dime. I get treated VIP at the hospital, I have nine screws in my foot, I had never seen a bill last year. Healthcare, they could get funding from the state, they don't need money from taxpayers, from the state. That's, I forgot how much that money for healthcare. And your social security is part of the salary, why are we paying for the social security, it's already included with anybody's paycheck, you know? Why is that money taken out from our tax money? I mean, for going directly to the library, it's weird. It's like it's getting doubled for social security and other other funding, it's just weird. I don't know, this has to be redone with accountant, I mean, and see if there's anybody paid for an accountant to go through, sort out all this ridiculous billing, you know? I think that's, I don't know what else to say, this is ridiculous, thank you.
Lydia. Sorry, it's hard to make out the last name, I think it's J A N C H. Next one, Chrissy Papnick. Chrissy Papnick. Somebody's coming. Okay. She's here.
Way too short for this. Can I be heard now? Yes, alright. So I'm here to address the board, I'm not generally political. Like, I like to speak my mind and stand up for what's right, but I felt the need to come as a patron. So I've been coming here like most of my life. And I've always gone to libraries, whether it's Chicago, Skokie, Niles. Wherever I've lived. And I've grown very fond of this library in particular, especially in recent years because of all the services they offer. The outreach to the community, I'm a preschool teacher, so we've used services often to get books for our kids. And one of the things we do is teach foreign languages at our school. And we have children that speak English and other languages, so we like to have the resources for them. So it alarmed me when I was hearing that they're cutting those services. I was just getting some facts here, Niles is diverse, yes, 72% of it is a white community, however. 55% of those over the age of five speak a language other than English. So we're not just a white community, that's what I like about it, we have every nationality. And I know all communities do, but Niles is usually very accepting. You know, 20% are Asian, nine Latinx, three black, and about four and a half percent is more than one race. So when I'm hearing. That they want to cut and get rid of the books that are in languages other than English, that just doesn't seem to be fulfilling our community. Or community, society, and you know, this century. So that is quite alarming. You know, I also thought it was quite amazing that the library. Was able to win an award in 2020 during a pandemic. For getting more people to sign up for library cards, I thought it was a great outreach with the community. Where we got a little card or was able to show a little card, I should say, and go to different community restaurants or services, businesses. Personally, there was one right next to my house that I learned about simply because of the library, because I use that. So I feel like the library is not just supporting us as patrons, but we're supporting the community as a whole. It was the best deal ever program. We also. You know, some other programs I've used are the preschool info night. It advertises daycares both in the surrounding community, but it also helps families that live here find quality daycare or decide if they can, you know, what centers they decide are quality. Steam Night is another thing that I've done here that I thought was amazing because it brought together, you know, science, technology, engineering, math. And it brought, you know, they had a Lego day, they had robots, they had all kinds of services and it was really neat because you saw like little kids doing it and adults. It wasn't just a program for one. And one of my favorite activities they do here, which last year no way did anything, but is there like Festival of Cultures kind of a thing? Where they work with the community, they got people to come in, donate food, and then had people do performances and it just brought out new community. You know, it brought people from the community to brighten their world and to see what other cultures can do and share with us. And also opened our eyes to new businesses in the area. As far as the teens go, it concerns me that, you know, we're not open on Sundays. That is a whole day that, you know, they're not here and they could be home causing trouble as opposed to in the library. You know, I love the teen underground program, I wasn't a part of it growing up, but you know, they have it now and I see. You know, I go in there honestly to get video games sometimes and. I see the teens in there and they're always laid back and having fun and being appropriate. It concerns me that they're cutting cleaning crew during a pandemic, I mean, now is when we need the cleaning crew. Not, you know. Not later. And. Losing it, you know, not reaching out to schools and seniors, I don't understand how they're supposed to get books, I mean, if you're in. A senior living home, you can't just get bused to the library whenever you want to come. And you know, especially for me working in daycare, you can't, we don't have buses for little kids like that. They're very hard to get and you have to have certain restrictions and seat belts and it's just not an option for us to bring our children here as teachers. In my field. So that, you know, that that very much concerns me. They had a quote. However, I lost the quote. I was slightly alarmed, you know, circling back to cutting. The budget on the books for all languages. I think we actually need to increase that budget. I think, you know, it builds a better community if you have people speaking more than one language. And as somebody else had said, when you're coming into this country from another country, you, yes, you, it helps when you learn our language, but. We also have to learn your language and have books that you feel comfortable reading and not just for little kids, but all ages, adults, teens, everybody. I guess, you know, I've used so many services here, including. Like the technology services right now is what I use the most. At least before the pandemic, when everything closed. And I learned a lot from the librarians when I needed help, they've always been very helpful. As far as like, you know, I've seen, I've go to the classes in person, I've gone to a few online and honestly, in person is way better. I learn better hands on than I do sitting in front of a computer. And I love it because I see people that are in their twenties and I see people that are in their sixties and seventies and eighties. And there's people like me in their forties, we have all age ranges that are doing these programs and it's great to come together. And when you do enough of them, you start to actually get to know some of those people and that makes a little community all its own as well. Which I really enjoy. So these budget cuts concern me because it worries that it's going to make the library worse. When it, right now, it's amazing. It's like one of the best, I used to say Skokie was the best and then I lived here. And until recently, with these budget cuts, I'm a little concerned, but you know, it really was the best and I bring people in from, you know, other communities to come here because it's so great. So I guess I'm just asking for you to reconsider your budget cuts. And, you know, allocate more money for children, seniors, and different cultures. I mean, I love that, you know, Niles is so accepting, I'm a lesbian and I haven't had any issues coming here. And like being out and open, both with the library staff and finding books to teach the children or to read myself. And when I'm in a program, I'm not like embarrassed if I make some pride shirt or whatever I want to do. And like 10, 15 years ago, you couldn't always say that about most communities. So I do think it's also a gateway for, you know, social, not, you know, just academics. Again, community as a whole. Thank you. Again, community as a whole. Thank you.
Susan Grabowski. Susan Grabowski.
I have lived in Niles for 45 years and I have watched the library get bigger and bigger and yet better and better. And we've won all kinds of awards and all kinds of recognition and grants. And all of a sudden now, we've got this new board in trustees who I think if the people knew what's going to happen, they would have gone and voted. Everybody assumed that, yes, it's a small election, nothing's going on every time. And I've been here 45 years. We've had a board come in, they wanted what's best for the people in the community. And they've always done that. So they assume the new board would want the same thing, the best for the people in the community. Obviously, they were wrong. If you put something like this to a resolution, you'll find that the people will vote against it overwhelmingly because they have in the past, whenever there's something that needed money for the library, it's been voted for. The people know how important this library is. We have the best library in the area. Everybody knows that. You talk to any of the people in this suburban libraries, they'll tell you that. We have the best staff, yet they're paid probably less than most of the other libraries. We have lost some good people over the years because they were paid less and they had families to feed, bad houses, and they couldn't afford to work here for that less money. But the staff who stayed have worked their hearts out at less money than they could be making somewhere else because they were dedicated. And now you want to pay even less money? How can they exist on that? We'll be losing all of our great staff. When the pandemic was on going on and you needed something in the library, you could call. I called. My granddaughter needs 10, a dozen books. What kind of books? What age? What would you like? Come to, when do you want them? We'll have them ready for whenever you want. They've been more than happy to do anything we needed. And things like the roof, how can you not fix the roof if it needs to be fixed? Every homeowner knows if you don't fix the roof, you're going to have trouble. It's going to be a big cost. But you just say, ah, forget it, maybe it'll go away. It's not going to get better, it's going to get worse. It's unbelievable. And this is supposed to be a library for all the people in Niles. Niles has a large number of people who don't speak English, who are old like me, and eventually need to go to nursing homes and would like to get books, who have children or grandchildren in nursery school or kindergarten or craft schools who need books, who don't sing English and need books. You want to cut the foreign language books. They're part of Niles. They're paying taxes also. Why shouldn't they have books to read? You want to cut the programs for people. There are programs for everybody. If you look at all the programs we have, each one is different. Each one's for so many different, you need technology skills, you need computer skills, you need to write a resume. Do you need a craft skill? Do you need a little skill? Do you need to find a book to read? And they find good books for you. If you want a good book, you ask them, they'll suggest a good book. What do you need? They can do it for you. If you have children, you want to get involved in school. Some parents work and they can't afford babysitters. The kids come after school. And they stay and they study in the library and it's helping their computer information, help them find what they're doing. Some people come and they can't afford newspapers. They come up here and read the newspapers. There's something for everybody that lives in Niles, in this library, and you want to cut that. Why? If you ask the people in Niles, they'll tell you, they'll pay more money for the library. It's the cheapest thing on our tax bill. And it's the most valuable thing and most worthwhile thing. And for you to cut it for no reason at all just because you can? I also heard that you wanted to have more say in who gets on the staff. When I was a teacher, when you hired teachers, the head of the principal interviewed with a person from the department, the new teacher. They didn't have the headboard person, the headboard, come down to interview. When you get staff for the library, you don't have the trustees interview them. They don't know what's needed. They don't know what's required. They have no skills to evaluate. You have to have the library and the department head come and interview that person. You can't take over running the whole library. It's not your job. Your job is just to oversee broadly what's going on, not day-to-day nitpick what's happening and try to cut money. This library is the best thing we have in Niles going for us. And if you cut it, you're going to lose a lot of people in Niles too. Because what keeps people here is the good schools and the good libraries. Thank you.
Dale Zilligan. Dale Zilligan.
Okay, I've been a resident of Niles for 33 years in Texas. I think the library is great. Your building is over the top. It's better and and more fiduciary and intimately critiqued than any other library of all the surrounding communities. Costs a lot of money. I'm guessing right around $400 a square foot. So I've worked both sides to this. I worked private industry and I've worked for government-funded industries. I'm going to tell you one thing. Government-funded industries are required fiduciarily to do the cheapest thing they can to save us money. Okay, so this is what the board is supposed to do. And they're doing it. Now, the private industry, they have to make a profit and they do it cheaper than the government people. I'll tell you, I work both sides. And I'll tell you that hopefully you guys are going to stick to your guns and that you're going to take, and like the roof, okay, I'm an engineer. The roof should be looked at from somebody that knows construction. And don't believe, and don't believe what your architects tell you. We've been taken down the road. They get 15%. And there's a whole lot of things you can do that make a roof good. And there's a whole lot of things with the newest technology. I work for a place right now. We just spent $580,000 on a 300,000 square foot roof and it leaks worse than it did before. So you have to be very careful of what you do and that is your responsibility. And I really think that as far as, okay, the union, it's a great thing. I'm a member of a union. That's why I came to where I'm at. I've been in the union my entire life and it's been a good living. But I'll tell you what, unions aren't what they were. You don't have apprenticeships. You don't require degrees to get into it. All you have to do is join. Look at what happened with the public works across the street. Budgets went up 20% when they joined the union. You're in my tax dollars. Okay, we have to look at things from a perspective, what our grandkids are going to take care of and pay for. The government right now is spending wildly. And do we need it or is it just something to gain votes? I hope you guys don't do something to gain votes that you stick by your guns and approve a budget that's fiduciary and will benefit everybody. I'm not saying you have to cut programs, but do what's necessary. That's what you're supposed to do.
Rick Segeling. Rick Segeling. Last name, S E G G E L I N G. First name is Rick. Nope. Okay. Stephen Kramer. Stephen Kramer.
Hi, my family moved into Niles in early 1953 and I was born into Niles in late 1953. I went to grammar school at Niles Elementary. I went to high school at Niles West. And many a research and term paper were done at the library and many an hour was spent in the library doing my homework. And I've come to, I knew the library back, I remember when the library was just a small building in the strip mall right near where Papa, not Papa, the sandwich shop over there on Waukegan is now located next to, but used to be Pan Cow Drug. So I have all those memories. And I remember seeing the library approved and built and I remember seeing the extension built and I've totally appreciated it. To me, a library is as important to a community as the public works, as the fire department, as the police. Would people here have any of those services cut back to any extent? Would you have your leaf removal eliminated? Would you have garbage cut back to say three, maybe four times a month and skip a week during the course of the year? I think not. And to me, diminishing the library's services and not maintaining the library's infrastructure properly would be a huge mistake. And I think it would be a detriment to the community if that were to happen. And that's all I have to say.
Christopher Barjon.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity to speak to you. I think this hearing tonight has been a great example of democracy in this country. You have both sides speaking and the board is going to have to make their decision. We've heard criticism of the board and certain attacks on the board, which are uncalled for. The people that were elected to this board have a conscience and in their conscience will do what they think is right for the citizens of Niles. As our former president said, President Obama, elections have consequences. If people don't like what the board's doing, they can vote the people out. Certain members were voted in at the last election and they are following their conscience and what they think is best. I think that what you're going to have to do is when you decide to vote on this budget, is look at your conscience and decide what's best in your heart to the people of Niles. Thank you.
Elizabeth Lynch. Elizabeth Lynch.
Hello. At one of the many meetings over the last two months, this board discussed the cost of hiring a second law firm at a higher rate than the current law firm. And I will never forget the comment Joe McCula made in response to the valid concerns about these additional costs. He said, "Sometimes you get what you pay for." On this one issue, Joe McCula and I agree. Budgets are moral documents. They force us to make hard choices, to prioritize. And so they are a mirror of our values. We can choose through this budget to support the most vulnerable or the most privileged. We can value access for all or we can prioritize the interests of a few. We can spend our taxpayer money on materials and services that directly benefit the community. Or we can waste our taxpayer dollars serving the personal interests and conspiracy theories of four of the trustees. Like many of the people here tonight and at the rally, I have spent far more time than I ever thought I would looking over the budget this board proposed, going line by line, comparing it to previous years and to comparable libraries. But the truth is, that wasn't even necessary. This budget makes its values loud and clear. This is not a document of fiscal responsibility. It is fiscal selfishness. It is a choice to prioritize your own political agendas at the expense of the community. It is immoral. This budget cuts direct services to the community like outreach to schools, despite outcry from school boards, superintendents, and parents that know the difference this makes in our children's education. Despite everything we heard from some of these trustees about the fixed income of seniors, this budget cuts one of the most popular programs for seniors and all outreach to nursing homes, asking them, the seniors, to pay for it themselves. It relies on a decrease in library hours, the equivalent of two full days closed every week. Apparently, people that work nights or weekends, working parents, anyone that can't make it during the new narrow hours aren't valuable enough for our trustees. The budget even eliminates the small amount used to celebrate and reward the library volunteers, seniors, teens, and people with special needs whose volunteering helps them gain job skills and who gives so much back to our community. We are told the community must suffer this austerity, these cuts and reductions in services, the loss of jobs and dedicated staff because there just isn't enough money. And yet, the trustees found the money to increase the consulting budget by $100,000. And those of us that have been watching closely know that it will probably not be enough. The trustee's friend and campaign videographer has already started work at $100 an hour with no limit or scope to his contract. Legal fees in the last month soared to $19,000. At this rate and with this board's insistence on fighting FOIA's, firing staff, and fighting the union, the board will quickly run out of funds in this budget line. The cost of these unnecessary legal battles and pointless audits will skyrocket and more sacrifices will be asked of the community to cover them. This board is so convinced that they know better than previous audits, state standards, experts in the field, and the staff of the library that have been working here for decades, that they're willing to fire people and defund services to children and seniors. And in one of the more blatant acts of selfishness, they have even made sure to keep $3,000 just for themselves for their own expenses. During another one of the many board meetings these past two months, Carolyn Dervlich showed her true colors when she said, "We aren't talking about people, we're talking about numbers." She is so wrong. This budget is all about people. The staff that will lose jobs and pay, the community members that will no longer have storytimes at our schools, or access to the internet when we need it, or the latest book from our favorite author, or staff to help us at the computer, or just a safe place to bring our kids. Budgets are moral documents. If this board votes to accept this budget, then we will know what it is they value. Money over people. Politics over the community. Privilege over service. Please, listen to the voices of the 1,200 people that signed a petition asking you to reject this budget. Listen to the voices of the hundreds of people that showed up at a rally tonight and stayed here for this budget meeting. Throw out this budget which the mayor of Niles called ludicrous and which I will call cruel. All you have to do is what is right. Thank you.
Linda Ryan.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to just to say what I need to say. I'm Linda Ryan. I have lived in the Niles main community since 1998. My heart is very heavy. As most of you know, this library is dear. I'm getting emotional. I've served on this board for 12 years and this library means a lot to me. I'm a librarian at Mainsouth and I also represent District 27. I speak to oppose the proposed budget. We want our library building and services, and we deserve them as a community. I've heard tonight that the library is not going away. And what are we going to save? Well, with these budget cuts, the library of what we have known since I've lived in Niles is going away. Why do you propose less hours in our library when growing the hours has built our community? I don't understand it, I really don't. Less hour equals the library going away. I also oppose to decrease in professional development monies. Our staff deserves to learn new and trending ideas, to pass those ideas back to us, the community. There is nothing courageous about irresponsibly cutting a budget for our library. Our library, our library, okay? The library is our lifeline, it is my lifeline, it has been my lifeline. I've learned through this library. I learned library school through this library. My kids have learned through this library. I have learned through this library, through these librarians, through the staff, through the custodians, through everyone, the security, everyone has helped me here. Please stop micromanaging. It's my one true statement, stop micromanaging. That is what you're doing. Not to the left of me, to the right of me. One single title, if you don't know libraries, one single title, as a lot of people spoke tonight, may need to be purchased in 10 different ways, okay? We need digital, we may need large print, I heard someone talk about. Multiple languages, to name a few. Cutting our book budgets, cutting our we can't do it, we can't cut our budgets because we need to buy possibly that one single title in multiple ways, okay? I know you're not librarians, but you have to understand that, okay? You have to look at that through a librarian and the community's eyes. You can't be neurosighted. Another thing that I'm worried about being a resident, just let me think, hold on, let me see where I'm at, sorry, I lost my place. Just, I think people have already started a movement of not wanting to possibly live in our beloved town. I go try selling your home after people Google Niles, Illinois, and compare us as many as tonight, compared our neighbors, and see what they choose. They might not choose to live here. We have had a lot of bad press lately, as our press people know. Okay, we don't want that. That's not what we want. Our community is a good community, let's keep it, go ahead, okay? They will choose to move elsewhere, and we don't want that, okay? What I'm really asking the board is to please work together and to come up with a new proposed budget tomorrow. I'm really hoping, I'm praying that that's what happens. We need our library open every day as it was. We need our teen librarian to serve our teens in District 27, all District 27. They learn about our programs here. We work hand in hand. Tonight, I know Peter Grino talked. Glenn was my student at Main South, okay? And he learned to love libraries for our true partnership, our partnership that we had with Main South and Niles Public Library. Like, that is how Glenn learned to love and is now going to be a librarian. I mean, how exciting is that? We can't take that away. We can't squash that. And you will squash that by not letting our librarians reach out to the schools. Period. It will be squashed. I mean, that is a real story, you heard it tonight. It's based on our partnership, okay? Also, librarians do not have time to be security, clean, and shelf. That is not in their job description, okay? It's not in their job description, they don't have to do that. Jesse White states in the Illinois Public Library Trustee Manual, I know it's already been stated, by the way, I know because I know Becky, Patty, and Diane have read it because I have seen it, we've all read it together. But have you, Carolyn? Have you, Susan and Joe? Oh, Olivia, oh, I'm sorry, oh, she's not here. Oh, yeah, Olivia doesn't show up or listen to community, just her daddy, oh, so sorry. Quote from Jesse White, our state librarian, "The public library is the heart and soul of every community, and the Board of Trustees ensures that it remains strong, vibrant, and relevant to patrons with a wide variety of needs, hopes, and dreams." We've heard it from everyone tonight. "The library is open and welcoming to all, serving the educational, recreational, and information needs of its community." This is from Jesse White, our state librarian. Listen to what he's saying. "With your commitment to advocating for library resources and advising and supporting the library administration," oh my God, wait, wait, "supporting the library administration and staff as representatives of your community, our libraries will continue to be strong and successful across Illinois." Jesse White, unquote. "By making your proposed cuts, you are ridding your trustee obligation. Budget cuts will rid our community of deserved grants and free money. Library trustees are advocates of libraries and should support growth for sufficient processes." Did you listen to all the departments when they proposed their budgets? I did, I was here or I listened online, I listened to them. Our staff is financially careful with their spending. They said everything they needed, and you didn't listen, and you still proposed this budget. It's just appalling to me. Our staff is amazing, they are just so mindful of all the community needs. So let's maintain our award-winning library. Take action, talk over, and change this proposed budget. Thank you.
Rosemary Paliki or Palitski.
Good evening. It's nice to see everybody here. And I would like to say that I appreciate all the comments that were spoken tonight because I think at the root of it is that we all care about our community, we all care about our library. What we think needs to be done and how it should be done, we differ on those things, but we do have a common bond here, and I think we need to remember that as we go forward. I like to know who I'm addressing, and you know I'm Rosemary, many of you know me because I've lived here for 45 years with my family. I was a village trustee for four years, and I seem to put my nose in a lot of things that are going on in the village. And I know some of you because we raised our children together and went to school together. Some of you up there, we share the same religion, we go to the same church. Some of you worked with my husband as educators here in the village. So we do have common background. Some of you have been active in parish, in the parish that I belong to as a leader, as you are a leader now. But there is a gentleman who is sitting on the dais who I do not know, and I wonder if you could introduce yourself just for my benefit. That would be you, Mr. Are you Mr. Walsh, that was? Okay, thank you. Are you new to this board or have you been the attorney for a while?
I've been the representative of the library since the early 80s.
Good, well, thank you very much for identifying yourself, that makes it easier for me. I, you know, I came here to this meeting not intending to speak. I did not write anything except as I was sitting here. The people that spoke were much more eloquent and have much more of a background than I do in the library. I'm very happy to pay my taxes, come here and get a book and go home and sit down with it. I'm happy that my son was able to have that opportunity. But there are a few budget issues that I would like to address. The first thing was, Mr. Derblich, at the beginning, you made the statement that it may be necessary for an appropriation of $500,000 for expected or perhaps necessary money to fight legal fees, including the new union and perhaps FOIA requests. First of all, FOIA, I hope everybody knows, but if you don't know, Freedom of Information Act is what FOIA is. And this is what we're considering maybe spending money on, is to fight Freedom of Information Acts, request for that information. That's totally inappropriate, undemocratic, you know, the list of adjectives could go on and on. Secondly, would there be a need to fight a union if there hadn't been these drastic proposals for cutting jobs? Did you not bring this on yourselves? I don't, I am not, some of you may disagree with me because, you know, I was a trustee on the village board. I'm not a divisive person, I like to see people come together. I'm urging you to look at this budget again before you vote tomorrow night and to work together to find areas that you can agree on that will benefit all of us. You were elected, definitely, and votes do count, whoever made that statement. That's a very clear statement. But you were elected, I think someone said, by 8% of the voters here. And, you know, good for you, I wish more people had come out to vote. One way or the other, more people should have come out to vote. But you were elected, but you weren't elected just to represent 8% of the population. You were elected to represent all of us, whether we voted or not. We're the taxpayers, you need to represent all of us. By the presence here tonight, and I'm just guessing, I would say overwhelmingly, the population in both of these rooms and that we're at the reality are in favor of a review or tabling, someone suggested, of the proposed budget until you have professionals evaluate what needs to be done here. There are many professionals on the library board. It doesn't necessarily mean hiring new people, but taking advantage of the expertise that already exists in our community and for which you are paying their services already. You have, many of you have great backgrounds, but you aren't librarians. None of you are librarians. You don't know what's involved here, so you can't say that, well, my I'm sorry. Well, at least I could say I'm wrong. I hope, I hope that's something that's universal, that if you are wrong, you can say that you made a mistake and I can work forward to this. My last comment would be, this gentleman right next to me talked about the roofs, and there was a posting on Facebook today that even some of our oldies do look at every once in a while. And I know that some of you trustees did receive this posting, and it's in regards to the roof. And it says that this project has been verified by qualified roofing experts. And as I recall, when the previous board voted on the roof, it passed, and I believe that everyone voted for it. Maybe even with some exceptions, but everyone, including current members of the board, voted for it. Why are you rethinking that now? Why are you putting this in a position that's going to cost us more money in the future? Thank you for your time, everybody, keep a good fight, and please work together, and remember you represent all of us, not 8%. Thank you.
Kimberly Mulvaney.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Mulvaney. I am actually a resident of Chicago. I've been coming to this library since my kids were small. They're grown. I am also a scout leader for about 13 years. This is probably one of the safest places to bring the kids. I have too little leadership because I have public. But with your budget and cutting the hours, these kids have nowhere to go. Kids are priceless. You can't replace them. You have to put knowledge into them. Excellent place for this to happen. Can't do it if your doors are closed. I'm asking you to consider your finances and the budget. The doors need to stay open. That's all I have to say.
Kathy Garrity Rodinos.
Rodinos.
Rodinos, thank you.
Yes, it's a Greek name, I know.
I apologize for mispronouncing everyone's name.
She should be coming, I don't see her yet, because I know who she is. Here she is, she's coming.
My name is Kathy Garrity Rodinos. I do not live in Niles. But I'm here representing about 150 Niles residents and residents of other areas who can use this library. Many of them are terminally ill, chronically ill. Some of them have physical disabilities and a few have mental disabilities. And I'm also here representing grandparents who have taken on the challenge of raising their grandchildren. They are devastated by the budget cuts. This library has been the lifeline to many of them. It provided training for a person who was denied training at their job. They came here to a little program. They got the training they needed, and they got a promotion. That promotion made it possible for them to move into their own home in Niles. And isn't that what we want? People who make themselves better, who use the resources available to them. If you get this budget to go through, you are pulling the rug under from the people who need it the most. And I implore you to rethink why you feel this budget is appropriate. Unfortunately, this week I had to move someone into a nursing home, someone who came to this library for many years, and they are no longer able to come to this library because their nursing home does not have a way to get them here. And it's not as easy as in getting to Uber or a Lyft or even a paratransit van. This has been a devastating loss for them. Their family is trying to figure out a way for them to get the resources, but unfortunately, their nursing home just told them, "You will no longer be sending anybody to their home, to their nursing home." As also, as another part, I cannot believe that you do not want to send people to schools. Right now, schools can barely even get enough buses to run their regular routes, let alone, field trips this year are a no-go because they can't afford the buses. You cannot put as many kids on one bus anymore because of the pandemic, and under 12 can't be vaccinated. If you are a child, if you have a child with special needs, you have the right to tell the school district, "Don't send my kid on that field trip to the library" because you know you get people here who maybe sometimes don't want to wear a mask. But if you're a child under 12 and you have a terminal illness, you're not going to get to come out to the library. It's easier for you to send a person to a school than for a school to take valuable time and to make the heart-wrenching decision, "Hey, we can't take this kid, we can't get the little bus," or "this child's terminally ill." And, you know, a lot of people say they're terminally ill, why are they going to school? I worked with a young lady who was terminally ill. She graduated in February, she died the next day. It was her parents' wish for her to get her high school diploma, and she did. And I will tell you that the And I will tell you that the library that she goes to in Displanes is very welcoming. And I implore you, please, think about the impact this budget's going to have, not just for the Niles residents, but for the residents, other residents of other communities who come to use this library. It is their lifeline. They depend on it. You have the best staff ever. Please don't hamstring them and prevent them from doing the best job possible. Thank you.
Suzanne Atanas. Suzanne Atanas.
Thank you. I am Suzanne Atanas. And the first thing is to call Susan Dove Lomki back. You want to know, pulled that off in a public meeting? And let's say we'll forgive and forget what the board did that was not good. We do not do that to a first-class librarian, a first-class library director who knows how to run a library. We are all here because we care about the library. If she wants to spend on something and you don't approve, you don't approve it. You can also postpone it at a different meeting. But you don't put pressure on her where she thought that you were going to vote her out. And I believe it was on hours.
Ms. Atanas.
And Susan Dove Lomki is part of the budget.
Ms. Atanas, this is not on the budget.
Okay, you're in your opinion. Please put her back. I'm, I'm almost through with you, Ms. Driblick, okay? I'm almost through with you.
Okay.
Let me speak. Putting Ms., putting her back as the library is part of the budget. Don't waste my five minutes. She is part of the budget. Please put her back at full salary and benefits as part of the budget. All right? Another thing. Please don't clap because you're wasting my time. I have important things to say. You can do your applause at the end. She was right on with 70 hours.
Ms. Atanas, please.
You're wasting my time.
I know because you're not speaking about the budget item.
Don't waste my time.
You're going to have to leave if you don't want to speak about the budget.
I am talking about it. She wanted 70 hours. And you, Driblick, and the board, we're talking about 54. Well, 70 hours, let's do our math. 70 hours is Monday through Friday, 9 to 9, and it's Saturday, 1 to 5. And another thing, you need to add another 16 hours because Sunday is 1 to 5 times four weeks in a month of Sundays is 16 hours. Saturday is Sabbath. Saturday is when many people do their running errands. Sunday is when we kind of catch our breath. Let us come to the library and enjoy it and do what we need to do. All right? And so I'm against your budget cuts. There were many of them. School services, you know, not going to nursing homes, staff cuts. We're not going to cut the staff. We need them. All right? We need them because we're going to be increasing hours. We don't really care too much about traffic. But we need the library staff so that when people need something, they need assignment that they have to do, and students have a lot on their plate. And they need the library hours open so that they can call the library. They can get help with homework. There was a homework line, and we need all of it. We don't want any of the cuts. We don't want any of cuts to cleaning. We don't want any cuts to outreach, to the number of books we're going to buy. This is a star library. It's one of the best in the country. The 20 libraries around us or so, they depend on us to be the star library. They're not going to pick up where we leave off. They're hoping that we don't do it. Another thing, having public comment a day before you're going to vote on the budget is just like, wow, where are you going to find time to make the cuts? Where are you going to find time to get it typed up? Where are you going to find time to print it? You should have had this three and a half weeks ago, not the night before. So you know what? We're going to give you more time. You're not going to, I don't think, be able to vote on it tomorrow. And another thing, I've been talking about this for 20 years. We need to get revenue from stock returns according to the true profitability of multi-trillion and multi-billion dollar corporations and banks. All right? This is where the library needs to get the money from, not raising taxes. And this is where we need to have money so that when we bring a child into the world, 18 years later, there's money for that child to go to college. We've been ripped off by the S and P, Dow Jones, and NASDAQ. And, and I'm telling you, people like you and me are ripped off. People on our block and the people who are on gangs will sell their guns and they'll get good returns. This will reduce crime and will reduce number of who don't know where the next meal will come from. So I'm urging you, don't hire consultants, don't hire unnecessary audits, don't hire a more expensive attorney. But please call Susan Dove Lomki back. We'll forgive and forget that there was so much pressure put on that woman that was not right. And we'll forgive and forget you guys, what you did to her. But we need to make it right. And I want her back, and I want her back be soon, like tomorrow. And I'm not kidding, at full salary and full benefits. And she's a first-class top librarian and director. And she knows, she knows what's best for the library. She brought us this as one of the best in the country. And we all need to work together. We all have input. We all have ideas, but we need to be kind and respectful. And we don't do that to anybody, especially in executive session. All right? You want to know, pulled that off here, and you know it. But we'll forgive and forget what, what was done, and let's move forward, but we want her back. And I'm telling you, nice way. It takes one phone call. You can put on the agenda tomorrow if you want to vote, but really takes one, one phone call. And I want you to have the right of mind to treat her. She's like my sister, like my best friend, like my mother, and I love her dearly. And not only me, everybody does. She has such good character, such good demeanor, such good judgment, such class, such goodness. And we want her back. And I don't want to have to write petitions to get her back. I want you to call her and say, we want you back because she deserves to come back. She's everything to us, everything. And we don't do that to nobody, especially her. Please get her back tomorrow. I'm not kidding you. You can say, we know, we know, we voted after you were forced to resign, and she asked for a severance package so she wouldn't go out with nothing. But why was so much pressure put on her? No one is treated that way, nobody. And you can say, Susan, we're going to work with you. We'll give you your full salary and benefits back. We don't want you to go somewhere else. You're needed here and you're wanted here. And please call her back. We want her back tomorrow. Please, please. She is such a good person. She's like my sister, my mother. She's everything, not only to me.
But you're being redundant. If you have any, if you want to move on to something else, please do.
All right, I want to, all right, I want to thank you for your service. But I don't want these cuts. There's no reason for these cuts. There's no pressure that you don't have the money. You have the money. Don't reduce the staff. They need their job, and they're not doing nothing. And don't measure so much traffic. Measure that we have the right materials available when people need them. This is services to seniors. This is service to schools. We have the best schools in the country here. I know that they get assignments where they have to use a library. And we cannot have cuts. And I thank you that you allowed me to speak. But having a, a public comment the day before a budget vote, you know, we know it's not going to have be enough time. So you have time to make your changes, get rid of all the cuts that you are going to make, get rid of all the overspending you are going to make, like I mentioned. You're going to need to have it typed in. You're going to need to run it off. You're not going to be able to vote tomorrow. And I want you to know I'm available. I'll give you my free time, whatever you need of me. Okay? You'll find me in Displanes Phone Book under S Atanas with my phone number. I'm here to help you. We have to work together. You need to have Suzanne Wolf work with you. You need to have the staff, including Susan Dove Lomki, work with you. You have a lot of staff here who want to work with you. And I would like Susan Dove Lomki to come back tomorrow. We need her and we want her. She's a top librarian in the country. She knows the best practices. She knows what's trending. And she's everything to me, and she's everything to every one of us here and in the community. And we love her and we want her back. Thank you. And, and all of you, I want you to be kind to Ms. Lomki when she comes back at full salary and benefits. And we want her back tomorrow. And I want you to be kind to her and respectful to her because she's top-notch and we want her back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for getting Suzanne Dove Lomki back tomorrow or as soon as possible. I'm telling you, thank you for that. And don't ever do that to anybody else. Don't ever, please, ever do that to anybody else.
Can I say, Debbie Kupkin? Debbie Kupkin?
We're not done yet, guys. I'm surprised about this no five-minute limit rule, but I shouldn't say anything, but. Okay. Okay. Okay, guys, you want to talk, go outside. All right. It's a little overwhelming because we all have a lot to say, but here we go. Okay, I'm all about community accessibility, planning, and learning. And that's why I've been teased since college because every time I go back to visit, I go and hang out in the library. So this place is a second home for my kids. It helped me raise them and be the excellent students and book lovers and volunteers that they are. I'm here about the budget, of course, to ask you to slow down to cooperate and communicate with each other, with the administration, with the staff and the community to consider the facts, to listen to the voices of the people, to pass a budget that you all can agree on that excludes these dramatic cuts to programs, materials, hours, and staff, and meets the standards as set in the Illinois statute. To accept your role as trustee to develop a strategic plan with stakeholders, to work together to meet residents' needs in a planful way, to accept the guidance and support of the training materials, forums, and programs through ILA, RAILs, and ALA, as well as the expertise of library staff within Niles and elsewhere, and to please perform your duties appropriately, professionally, and ethically. I understand that the proposed reduced hours, staff, and other cuts do not meet the Illinois statute and puts the library funding from the state of Illinois in jeopardy. The Illinois Library Association was so concerned about your activities in June that they issued a reminder document about those specific standards. They are warning you that our state funding is at risk if you do not meet these standards regarding adequate revenues to meet community needs, staffing, salaries, hours, and building maintenance. They stressed in this document that your job is to be open-minded, respectful, work well with others, have knowledge of the community, be interested in the library, and be able to plan and establish policies for services. They only wrote that because of you. In the trustee manuals and the trustee fact files published by the Illinois State Library and Illinois Library Association, they tell you what your roles are and how roles should be divided between the director and the staff and yourselves. I don't know if all of you have read it. It specifies your duties with input from the director that include developing long-range plans to address anticipated community needs and to advocate for funding necessary to meet those community needs. To do a budget before, the budget is the last thing in a planning process. Okay, it's the last thing. Some of you were just elected and you suddenly have a budget which slashes things, and that is not a planful process. I do not have a problem with organizational oversight by an active board. I do not, I do expect a board to be in alignment with the mission, goals, objectives, and bylaws of the organization. I expect excellent communication and a strategic planning process with input and feedback from as many district residents as possible. I expect respect and responsiveness to professional staff. I expect open communication between board members, staff, media, and the district residents. When trustees do strategic planning, the purpose is usually to improve efficiencies or effectiveness, to reach a different or expanded population of patrons, to expand some services and cut other services. But any successful change process should be planful and thoughtful with maximum involvement of all parties. To implement change to the betterment of the organization and its community involves a planning process where there is time to gather facts and ideas and work to achieve consensus. This is a key reason why I am extremely disturbed by our current situation. I see a split board proposing dramatic cuts without many of the key ingredients listed above to achieve the goals of our library and meet the needs of our residents. This is beyond acceptable and is very upsetting. Again, I am, we, we have Star Award for eight years in a row. We're one of the top 4% of the libraries in the country. We are a well-run, award-winning organization. We meet the needs and wants of a diverse community through professional staff and expansive, excellent programs. Again, I am not opposed to organizational change when it is done strategically through a consensus-building process to improve the organization and meet community needs. I want to add a few things. Services here are not duplicative. We are free for the people who walk into this building. We all help to pay for their accessibility. And we make things available at times that they can come. They're here for everyone whenever they want to come. The working families, the immigrants, the low-income residents, everyone. We all fund it so that people who can't afford the Park District or paid services can come here. We, we're here on a walk-in basis. We're accessible for everyone when they can come. We don't have an art center yet in Niles. We don't have a theater in Niles. We don't have a community center in Niles. This is the place that's accessible to everyone and anyone at many, many hours and should stay that way. I don't know if you are aware, but we do have a strategic plan. And it is due to expire in 2021. I don't know if you have read it. But that is what our budget should be based upon, is our strategic plan. In addition to the strategic plan, Susan Dove Lomki did a survey in February and March. I don't know if you have read it, but a survey and community input is what we should be basing our policies and program decisions upon. There were 200 people that filled out the survey. I know it's not a very big sample, but it, it still had people that spoke 18 different languages, and it's still 200 people. And interestingly, some of the things they said were that they've been frustrated that they can't spend more time at the library because of the pandemic, not that they wanted less time. They wish they had more time to use the library. And that's more than 50% of the respondents. And 80% said that the library is an excellent value. Now, you'll be happy to note that 10% of the people said that they like the library, but they're worried about their taxes. That was 10% of the responses. And there is 1% to people that said, I don't use the library and I don't think it's necessary in this day and age. So it did get somewhat of a, you know, representative sample. It wasn't completely biased because it had some of your opinions in it. Other things that it said were some things that they needed and wanted for the next two years, which I suggest you might want to look at. 50% of the more of the responses said that they, that they, that they use the library for technology instruction. They want to come here for inspiration to try or learn new things, for programs that are interesting, entertaining and informative, for ways to expand their perspective through reading, viewing and programming. So these are the things that we should be reading and agreeing on as a group of trustees and setting our priorities on based on the interests of the population. So with policymaking. Hold on, just give me one second. Almost done. So. You know, they talk about policymaking in the manual. Okay? The crafting of specific policy is usually prompted by a specific problem or need. Often the issue is brought to the board's attention by the director or other staff member, the people on the front lines. And then they've talked about a flow chart to make policy, to identify a problem, to receive input from staff and the community, to discuss, to assign to a committee, to draft a policy statement, to consider that and approve and codify the policy as a board. It talks about budgeting as a complex collaborative process, requiring many different inputs and achieves best results when many voices are expressing various viewpoints that are heard. Should reflect the appropriate mix of visionary creativity and well-informed fiscal reality. Two inputs are required to fashion a budget according to the trustee manual, a needs and goals assessment and an estimate of available resources. The needs and goals assessment comes directly from the library board's long range plan. Planning and budgeting go hand in hand. The budget is the long range plan in numbers and the long range plan is the budget in words. This is a dramatically different scenario than what is happening right now. Your proposed budget is not based on any planning process or cooperation. You ignored input from the director and staff. There was never agreement among the trustees of even basic facts about the library's current functioning and its needs, nor was there a process for community input. Your data was based on COVID numbers of attendance and speculation rather than pre-COVID numbers. Assumptions were made and stated as facts. Policies were not formally evaluated and changed. Your budget is not just a slashed budget. It resets priorities, changes policies, decides on action plans without any agreed upon goals or objectives, let alone input or facts. This is the opposite of a planful process. Thank you.
Margaret? How many more names to, to, okay? Georgia Logothetis? Georgia Logothetis? She's coming.
Good evening, everyone. Took me a while to walk over. I'm Georgia Logothetis. I am a longtime Niles resident. I am the mother of three beautiful children. I have a four-year-old, a two-and-a-half-year-old and a nine-month-old, which basically means I had to move heaven and earth and bedtimes to make it here tonight. But I made it because it's important, because numbers matter. I've worked in policy and politics for almost two decades now. And I tell everybody that I work with that policy is personal. It's not just numbers on a page. It affects people's lives. So when you cut library hours to 54 hours, despite recommendations from professionals that a library of, a community of our size requires far more hours, you're telling people that they don't matter. You're telling families that work two jobs, that have religious commitments, people that don't have the privilege of flexible scheduling, that they don't matter. When you cut staff below the recommended amount for our community, despite the fact that we, the taxpayers, have already paid for a study that found that our staffing levels were adequate for our community, you're telling people that they don't matter. And moreover, every dollar in that budget that you're cutting out from staff is $1 less for their rent, $1 less for their food. These aren't strangers. These are members of our community. They are our family and our friend. When you zero out a line item for a roof that desperately needs repair, you are literally not saving for a rainy day. And you are endangering the very structure of this building. It's reckless. And when you go ahead and eliminate the line item for professional cleaning, while we're still at the tail end of a pandemic with a Delta variant in a building that specifically caters to unvaccinated children, that's not just reckless, that's not anti-science, that's cruel. But it's not just your subtractions. It's not just those subtractions, the austerity that speaks volumes, okay? Your additions speak to your character as well. When you chose to fire a qualified law firm and bring on board what's essentially a solo practitioner at 350 bucks an hour, reeks to me of incompetence. But when you decided to hire a campaign supporter in a no bid contract, an unlimited contract at 100 bucks an hour, when there was another proposal that was submitted by a, somebody who does municipal auditing for a living, that speaks volumes and it tells this community that you don't care about ethics. Now, numbers matter, so I want to talk about a few other numbers before I wrap up. I'm going to try and remember these because, wow, it's been a long day with the kids. 1,019, 1,013, 1,106. I think I got that about right. Those are the vote totals that ushered in an anti-library, I'll make that judgment, slate that has decided to impose this austerity agenda. And my message to those members of the board, please do not mistake an 8.1% turnout for a mandate. The real mandate sits here before you, in this room, in the overflow room. That's the real mandate. And so I'm going to sum up with a few, one, one quick little thing on numbers. On behalf of my three children, on behalf of the what, 100-plus people that turned out here today, the thousands of people online that took action, the tens of thousands of taxpayers in this district, please, don't do politics, do your job. You have a fiduciary duty to maintain those funds in a responsible manner to invest in our community. So I beg of you, please, I'll end with one request. Throw out this garbage budget and start from square one. Thank you.
Tom Guzman?
Good evening, Board Counselor. My name is Thomas Guzman, longtime resident of Niles, Illinois. Having said that, that means I'm a taxpayer. I pay the freight. I pay the freight. We pay the freight. We need responsibility. We voted that in. We voted for the responsible people. They now have the checkbook. They now have the checkbook. What we have here tonight are a lot of people. I don't think they're residents. I don't think they voted. You're out of order. I have the floor. Why don't you sit there and listen? We listen to your, we listen to your garbage. So what you're inundated with here tonight are a bunch of special interest groups. Okay? The friends and the family hiring program is finished. It's done. The overstaffing is done. The paying of contracts to unknowns. The $1.5 million roof, which got them thrown out. This one didn't win, far from win.
But I got marbles in the majority of them, didn't I? And I'm still here.
One fell through the cracks.
Yeah.
One, one fell through the cracks. And that's fine. Let's stick to the budget. So budgetary concerns, $1.5 million roof. Is that what a roof costs? I don't think so. I don't think so. I think due diligence needs to be done as far as repairing the roof. I don't think so. I won't engage. I'll just, I'll just continue. Okay, also, the slush fund, the unaccounted-for funds, the overdrafting of taxpayer money and putting it to the side. Well, that's what got the old board thrown out. Moving forward, we have the new board, the responsible people, the responsible people with the checkbook. Overstaffing is not acceptable at any place, government.
For your information, sir, we're under 100 people, even though people are reporting we have more. So we are not overstaffed.
Madam President, who has the floor?
We are not overstaffed. We are understaffed.
So if you were to have 150 people, let's say you had 200 people that walk in, that walk in the library and 100 of them need assistance. There are 69, maybe 75 full-time employees. Do you debate that fact? Do you debate that fact?
I'm sorry, sir, but I was told I can't answer you anymore.
So you have at any given time 50 full-time employees here. 50 full-time employees at any time. Okay? If you have 200 people walk through that door per day, 200 people and 100 require assistance, that means that 50 people, 50 people are taking care of two people each. Where is that even acceptable? Can you tell me where that's acceptable? What kind of money is being thrown out the door? So as a taxpayer, as a person who pays the freight, I pay the freight. I pay the freight. Special interests do not pay the freight. Okay? The union does not pay the freight, which, that's fine. Bring in the union because now you've brought in your analysis, testing, all that. That's fine. These library, these librarians, they're going to be held to a higher standard. They're going to be held to a higher standard. Yes, exactly. But let's make sure that you're not doing what you shouldn't be doing.
Mr. Guzman, please address the entire board.
So let's make sure that, you know, the people that are doing the wrong things are outed and away from the children. Very simple. Get them away from the children. If you're doing the wrong thing and you get your analysis involved, that's what the union brings, you're going to be gone. It's against the, okay, let's get, let's get to the budget, the heart, the heart of the matter, the budget. 14% is not a drastic amount. This was overfunded to begin with. And 14%, it still leaves you an operating budget of about $6 million a year. $6 million a year. If spent appropriately, that will buy the right materials, books, that will facilitate a lot of things, that will employ a lot of people. But overstaffing, can't have it. It's not what people voted you guys in for. You guys were voted in. They're trying to intimidate you, marching, all, waiting in a lot. Don't, don't subscribe to the intimidation tactics. It's not going to, not going to happen. Don't let it happen. You have, you have the full support, your budget. Okay? I advocate, I advocate that you, this, this budget resonates with a lot of people that voted for you. I advocate that you pass this budget, get it done tomorrow as, as scheduled, stick with it and move forward. And if in two years it doesn't resonate with the people, you'll be gone. But my guess is in two years, this library will be better than ever with the correct, with the correct, with the correct funding, the appropriate amount of funding. I'll compare Park Ridge Library to this library, fund-wise. Yeah, that's budgetary comparison, for your information. So Park Ridge, 59 employees, annual budget 4.3. Okay?
Their library is a lot smaller than ours. You're comparing, you're not comparing apples to apples. You're comparing apples to oranges.
Serves, serves the same community. Matter of fact, matter of fact, there's 36,000 residents in Park Ridge and 29,000 in Niles. Correct. And the main, the main, a lot of the main residents reside in Park Ridge. So they utilize that library.
Please do not, please.
I would urge you. So anyway, I'll conclude with, please. I'll conclude with stick to your guns. Don't be intimidated by a few people that obviously didn't vote. We voted for this.
And thank you, I plan on sticking to mine, sir.
Yeah, well, you're in the minority, four over three. Figure, when you, when you figure it out, when you figure it out, the light bulb will go on. So please, pass the budget, be done with this nonsense.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion.
Motion to, to, motion.
Wait, hold on, please, because I just wanted to say something.
I'm sorry, are you on the list?
No, but I can speak afterwards.
Right now, I'm, I'm going to entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess before we start calling all of the people interested in speaking that have not yet signed. Please, we just want to take a 10-minute recess.
May I have a motion? I, I, I. Okay, second, can I have a second? Thank you. Okay, so can you take the vote, please?
Okay. Trustee Gerbelik?
Yes.
Trustee Schoenfeld? Trustee McCullough?
Yes.
Trustee Wazansky? No. Trustee Olson?
No.
Justin Keen Adams?
Yes.
Okay.
Please have it. Yep.
................................................................................. No, right here, in front of the microphone. I think Sue Willsey tried to start before, so we'll start her.
Hi, I just really thought I could have said about a million things today. For those of you who know me, know that I am a library evangelical, and I live and breathe and love libraries. I worked at this library for eight years, and I saw during that eight years' time a board that really supported this library, got a beautiful renovation done, and the board, this library just started making lots of awards.
You know, all I want to say is that there were four television stations at that rally today, and this is going to be probably a CNN story, so you guys better be ready to answer like it's Niles' law.
I'm a long-term resident. I've lived here over half my life. You've taken away a lot of what I was going to talk about, cutting programs and all the other things that, that we talked, the roof repairs. I guess the one thing is, you said you're going to increase the legal budget because of all the legal problems, and I'm sitting here going, why is there legal counsel here tonight? And did we just pay like $1,000 for that if he's getting $3.50 an hour? More than $1,000? We just, you just spent that? Is that fiscally responsible? You know, as one of the people who had voted for somebody I knew and had respected, I feel really disappointed that this is how this is going down. And I, I want to apologize to everybody that I voted for that person, and I'm, I'm very sorry.
So do I. Forgive and forget.
Hi, my name is Danny Connolly. I'm 22, and besides going to college, I am a lifelong resident of Niles Library, and I kind of had a creative opening, like a book, you can say, for what I wanted to say. But have people of the board seen the movie Avengers: Infinity War? I see some that. So I was reading the budget with my mother, who just spoke, and my dad, who's also in the audience, and it was basically cutting everything in half. And I understand that with the appropriations and all that, it's not going to be exactly like that. But that's half of all the favorite books being discovered from the library, half of all the movies or shows being shared on DVDs, and half of all program cutting. Again, it's funny because you Thanos snapped my speech when you said things I couldn't talk about anymore. But this is a library that I missed when I was 300 miles away in college, and a library that was so much more than the stereotypical dusty books and computers from 1983. This place served as a birthplace for new ideas for me, and it made my weekend filled with fantasy books and animated movies my parents didn't need to spend a dime for. And there have been plenty of times I've confused whether I like the Northwest suburbs of Chicago or not. But this is one of the three places that I have never disliked 100, up until reading about this controversy. So please, I beg the members of the board, reconsider this budget vote tomorrow. Don't be Niles' Thanos.
For the record, this is my first time ever... Oh, sorry. My first time ever talking, as you can see, in public. I have never done it, but I think it's my obligation to say something because of the librarians. They helped me since, I live here since 2000. I had three boys, and they all been coming to this library for different programs. They helped my kids through so many levels, like math, reading, and so many things, and programs. Everybody, every Sunday, every second Sunday, they were always looking forward for the Sunday program. Second Sunday program is what all the children were looking for, and they don't have that anymore. The other thing is about the books in Spanish. I look for books in Spanish to teach my children about the culture, about where they come from. And sometimes my, my mom teaches to him, reads to him, and it needs to be in Spanish, unfortunately. And the only place I can get Spanish books are at the library. The next thing is, I think in 2011, Niles was named the best place to raise a family. And I'm sure the library had a lot to do with that. And if this is the way the library is going to be going, like someone else said, who's going to want to move to Niles when they can't have a nice, good...